Thank you.
We're recording, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. It's January 27th, 2025, and this is a regular meeting of the Town Council. The open meeting in law allows us to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the council physically present at the meeting location while providing the public with adequate access to the meeting. This meeting is accessible in real time by Zoom, by phone, and as a live broadcast on Amherst Media, Channel 9, and livestream. There are, in fact, 10 councillors in the room in Town Hall. Given that we have a quorum of the council present, I'm calling the January 27th regular Town Council meeting to order at 6:31. I will call on each councillor by the name they have indicated they would like to be addressed, and at that time, please unmute your mic and say "present." And this will indicate that we can hear you and you can hear us. Pat De Angelis.
Present.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Present.
Councillor Ette.
Present.
Councillor Ette, you need to unmute.
Present.
I can't hear you. Why don't you work on your sound and just wave and say, and I'll agree you're present, okay? Thank you. Lynn Griesmer is present. Councillor Hanke.
Present.
Bob Hegner.
Present.
Councillor Lord is not present at this time. Pam Rooney.
Here.
Councillor Ryan.
Present.
Kathy Shane.
Here.
Andy Steinberg.
Present.
Jennifer Taub.
Here.
Councillor Walker. Not present at this time. There is no.
Can we check in with Councillor Ette to make sure that we can hear him?
Yes. Councillor Ette, have you figured out your sound yet?
Can you hear me?
No. No. Can we? Let's take a moment and see if we can clue him in. Now, he may have to go to the audio portion of the. He's chosen to log in again. Yeah. We had a problem with this the other day, too. All right, since, we'll come back to this before we move on, but there's no chatroom for this meeting. If you have technical issues, please let Athena and me know. To make a comment, please use the raised hand button. And if technical issues arise, we will figure out what to do at that time. Okay. Councillor Ette, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
You can hear us, but can we hear you? No. Okay. Anybody want to?
Yeah. Councillor Ette, please send me a message. I can walk you through looking at your audio settings.
Okay. During the evening, there will be one general public comment period. The order of the agenda is altered. Item 7, the discussion item regarding the town manager's goals, will take place after item 9. And the executive session that was scheduled has been postponed to another time. We'll just quickly look at the announcements. And there may actually be some additional committee meetings that have been scheduled since this was published. First of all, we meet as a council on the February 4th for a retreat at 6 o'clock in this room. We meet with the four towns on February 8th at the middle school at 9 o'clock. And we meet in this room on February 10th for a regular Town Council meeting and public forum. CRC is continuing their hearing on University Drive on January 28th at 6:30. That will also be the reorganization of that committee where they elected Chair and Vice Chair. Finance Committee is meeting on February 4th at 2 o'clock, correctly? Correct? Okay. Do we have a time for GOL yet? No. And do we have a time for TSL?
No, I believe we just have CRC and Finance Committee right now.
Okay, thank you. There is no hearing, so we're going to move to directly to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak who is in the town room, if you have not signed up, please do so with Athena. If you're on Zoom and you would like to speak, please raise your hand at this time. Athena, how many people have signed up for public comment?
Three.
Okay. There are none in the audience on Zoom, so let's proceed with the three people in the room. And let me just mention that public comment are on matters within the jurisdiction of the Town Council. Residents are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes. The council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during general public comment. Public comments are not reflective of the opinions of the council. We'll recognize speakers in the order in which they signed up. Athena, first one.
Can we pause just a minute to see if we can resolve the issue with Councillor Ette? Councillor Ette, can you try to speak again?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your persistence. Okay.
Okay, Jeanie Horgan, please come up.
Good evening. My name is Jeanie Horgan, and I'm a resident.
Speak more into the mic. Just pull it closer to you.
Good evening. My name is Jeanie Horgan, and I'm a resident of Precinct 3 and the current Chair of the Council on Aging. Last year, the town manager allocated $2.5 million of ARPA money to be used to upgrade the banks in the senior center. My understanding is that most of this money will be spent on bringing the building up to code to make it safer all. If there are monies left over after contracts have been awarded, I urge the Town Council and Town Manager to put those monies towards putting the senior services operation all on one floor with contiguous space. It will make a huge difference to make the senior services more accessible, easier to navigate, and allow for greater engagement among participants and staff. I think we're all in agreement that our current facility is inadequate. It's not nearly big enough considering the number of seniors in town. We lack in basics such as exercise facility, a kitchen cafe, and dance studio, among a host of other things. We know that it'll be a long time before the town will be able to build a new senior center. In the meantime, we need to make the most of this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to get as many upgrades completed as possible. Construction costs are only going to go up. Please help senior services take a giant step forward by consolidating their space to one floor. Thank you on behalf of the seniors in town.
Thank you for joining us, Jean.
Don Ripley.
Good evening, respected members of the Amherst Town Council and government. We really appreciate your public service, is very much appreciated. My name's Don Ripley.
Point of information or personal privilege? Can you just speak closer to the mic?
Oh, sure. I could yell, too, if you'd like. I really, I'm good at that. I'm currently, I'm a resident of Amherst residing in 11 Wildflower Drive, and also a member of the Council on Aging. And I've come tonight asking you to increase the senior center funding to provide for a full-time driver for our Silver Shuttle program. Currently, a part-time driver is paid for using ARPA funds, which will expire this year. As with many programs, the staff does amazing work with minimal resources. In a year and a half since the inception of the program, which was originally funded by a grant, they provided 1,356 rides, which includes basic transportation to the senior center, rides to medical appointments, and some field trips. More than 50% of the rides provided are for medical appointments. In addition to providing access to the programs at the center for the older residents otherwise unable to leave home, it provides another set of eyes for the staff to assess well-being and thus offer support services to our seniors in a preemptive manner. Full-time transportation service could increase the number of rides by over 40%. We have the wheelchair accessible van already, which was donated by the Friends of the Amherst Senior Center. The cost of providing a five-day-a-week service to expand and maintain the current service is approximately $50,000 as a budget line item in total. These helps us expand our outreach to a very deserving and often forgotten citizens in Amherst. They deserve our attention, respect, and our resources. Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us, Don.
Vince O'Connor.
I'm Vincent O'Connor, the 175 Summer Street apartment 12. Here to talk about issues involving the Police Department and the, all the various federal agencies that have been dragooned into becoming agents of the Homeland Security for the purposes of rounding it up. I think in this district, it's 75 people per day to make the numbers look good. And there are three, four situations, actually, that I want to just briefly bring before you. First is one where there is a town policy. If the federal authorities, whoever it's going to be, have a warrant signed by a judge, my understanding is the town takes the position that that's their business. The town will not participate, nor will its officers. The next three are more problematic. On the back of the Know Your Rights, there's a copy of a Homeland Security detainer. And that slip allows the authorities to go to somebody's home or workplace, but doesn't require that the individuals in the workplace or the people in the home have any obligation to open the door, speak to them, or whatever. That only occurs with a judicial warrant, and you should have something in writing, as should the Police Department from your Town Council about that. And with regard to feds with detainers for individuals, my understanding is that that's also a situation where the policy of the town is that the Police Department is not to participate. However, if there are attempts by the federal authorities to break and enter, to make threats that constitute dangerous activity, they have a right to go there and prevent the federal authorities from engaging in such activities and to explain to them what the limits of the law are in Massachusetts. The second issue is federal authorities taking into custody people who are citizens, as happened in New Jersey last Thursday or Friday. And in that situation, I think some modus operandi has to be worked out between the town authorities and the feds to make sure that no citizen is taken from this town by federal authorities out of this town. Third, are federal authorities in schools with, again, only detainers. If they have a judicial warrant, it's probably not appropriate to serve it in the school. But I would just, they, this is something would have to be worked out with the school administration. But if you, if the federal authorities just have detainers, similar to the one on the back of the Know Your Rights pamphlet, they do not have the right to walk about the school, to knock on the doors of classrooms and demand to be allowed in. And the Police Department should, if necessary, take whatever action is necessary to, to keep the federal authorities within the boundaries of their proper activities. And proper activities do not include.
We need you to wrap up.
Yeah. Breaking down doors in classrooms to enter and to inquire of students who are in there. So those are three things. It's, it's really important that those, these kind of things be addressed in writing by the Town Council, both for those of you who sit on the council as well as for every member of the Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Vince. That concludes public comment. There was somebody who walked in a little bit later. Did you plan to make public comment? If you plan to make public comment, you need to let us know immediately. Alicia, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you so much for confirming that.
Come on up, Angelica Bernal. Come.
Thank you. Good evening. Sorry for lateness, getting kids' food on the table. So it always takes a bit. So I just wanted to make public comment on the school budget situation. So I, I can, I'm here tonight as a parent of two children in the school district to urge you to help us over devastating cuts in our schools. If these deficits remain, our school district, as you know, stands to eliminate many, many positions. But I want to tell you the reality of what all this means to my children and their classmates. My son is a special needs student currently in Wildwoods Intensive Learning Center. He and five other classmates will be moving to the middle school next year. At this time, they have no teacher. The clock is ticking, and they need to fill this position quickly. But what hampers this? Stability. How can we properly attract a teacher when the trend in Amherst's cuts year after year? Special education teachers are in high demand and are increasingly lured away from public education by private ABA firms. They offer competitive salaries, tuition reimbursements to support master's programs, and great benefits. As we stand, we can't cut it in a climate where most teachers will ask, why would I want to go to a district without competitive salary and no job security? My daughter's in the Caminantes program at Fort River, and the same situation applies to her. She's in third grade, but we look to expand this jewel of a program into the middle school. But how can we attract teachers in this kind of environment of complete fiscal chaos and uncertainty? I think you know now from the parents that have spoken at countless Town Council and school meetings that our schools are really in crisis. We remain a growing community, and yet we are bursting at the seams to support students properly. We pay high property taxes here, our schools are in decline. And where's our money going? How can this be? We keep asking and advocating and scratching our heads as parents to figure out what to do. But the reality is, we're looking to you, as our elective officials, for some solutions. We need more funding and more investments in our schools, not less. When support for public education is in decline nationally, and the messaging from our new federal government is to devalue public education, I think as a town, we need to stand up and do otherwise. Thank you for your time. Oh, Angelica Bernal, District 2.
Thank you, Angelica. That concludes public comment. We are going to move to the consent agenda. The following items were selected because they were considered to be routine, and it was reasonable to expect they would pass with no controversy. To remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion later in the meeting, ask that it be removed after I've listed them and make the initial motion. It's to move the following items and the printed motions there under and approve those items as a single unit. Waiver of Town Council Rules 8.6 for Agenda Item 6.0A to 2025 Black History Month Proclamation. 6A, Adoption of 2025 Black History Month Proclamation. And 11, Approval of Minutes, December 16th, 2024, Regular Meeting, December, I mean, January 13th, 2025, Public Forum on Appropriations Outside the Budget. And C, January 13th, 2025, Regular Meeting. Are there any items that people would like removed? Seeing no hands, is there a second?
Second, De Angelis.
Thank you. We'll begin with the vote, in this case, Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Councillor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Councillor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Councillor Lord. Oh, I'm sorry, she's absent. Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Councillor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Councillor Walker.
Yes.
Pat De Angelis.
Aye.
Okay. With that, we're going to move on. We're skipping item 7 until later, and we're going to move on to the actual resolutions. I'm sorry, we're going to move to the resolution. And I've asked Alicia to read the last paragraph of the 2025 Black History Month Proclamation.
Thank you, Lynn. Now, therefore, we, the Town Council of the Town of Amherst, do hereby proclaim the month of February in the year of 2025 as Black History Month, and urge all residents to mark this occasion and to participate fittingly in its observance, beginning with a flag-raising ceremony on February 1st, 2025, with celebrations and recognitions and recognition throughout the month.
Thank you. We're going to move on to action items. Action item number eight is a sanctuary community bylaw, Data Resident Request Response. Paul, did you want to speak to this?
Yes, thank you. So, under our bylaw, any group of residents can submit a request for this specific information, and the information is to be presented to the council in answer to their questions, which is what you have in front of you.
Okay, but no action is required.
No action is required by the council.
Okay. Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none. We're going to move on. I'm sorry, yes. Did you have a question? Okay, Pam, go ahead.
Sure. It's, I wonder if, I appreciated the fact that this memo came to us to ask what the status was. And given the previous speaker tonight during Town Comment, could you update us a little bit while we're on this topic on what the town, any particular steps that the town government is taking to protect citizen rights in Amherst? That's a really general question.
No, it's, thank you for the question. It's, it's an important question. We, and we've talked regularly, especially since the first of the year, with our police chief. And he has had, I think he has had conversations with the superintendent of schools because they were going to be on, we want them to be all on the same page. There have been incidents in other cities where agents have shown up at schools, and we have sort of video of how that has been handled appropriately. We want to mirror that and make sure that people who are on the front lines of those departments are able to handle those same kinds of requests. You know, I had the opportunity, just a very brief passing comment to mention the situation with the governor over the weekend. And, you know, she, thanked her for her support on these initiatives. And so I think that we're in a pretty good shape, but we do anticipate there'll be some kind of, something will happen along the way. But we're, we're as prepared. I think Mr. O'Connor sort of summarized where we are on this as well as anybody could.
Pam.
Just to follow up on that, I would actually appreciate getting some kind of a workshop or training or something just to, just to educate us as councillors. If our, if our constituents come to us and say, what do we do for help? I would, I would want to know exactly who to point them to and, and where to go first.
Sure, I can work on something like that. And I just also want to mention that our town attorney is participating with other attorneys from other sanctuary communities to make sure they're sharing information amongst the different cities who are in towns who are considered themselves sanctuary communities. I'll look into getting some kind of educational material for the council.
Any other questions on this? Seeing none, we're going to move on to appointments. The town manager has no appointments. In your packet tonight is the memo that you all received with the appointments for the standing committees of the council. And so with that, we'll move on to the other item. Yes, Anna, you had your hand up. Please go ahead.
You had a comment on these, would now be an appropriate time.
Sure.
Say that. All right. With all that said, I lost my email where I pulled it up. So I was a bit surprised when I saw the, hang on. Let me just type and not try to type and talk because I just wrote "surprised" into my search bar. So this is a, the text of an email that I had sent to Lynn that I stated I was going to make state at the council meeting. For context, when I received Lynn's email asking for committee preferences, it read, "Please list your top three preferences," which I did. And in my email, I also said, "I'd love to only be appointed to one committee, but you asked her through preferences, so I'm giving you three preferences." So this is what I had written, and I'd like to state it now. "I'm frustrated that councillors engage in this process in different ways, which to me seems to lead to a strategic way of gaming the system. We were clearly asked to list our top three choices. Most of us did so, even if we only really wanted one committee. If I were to only list my sole top choice, does that mean I am promised a spot? It seems, from this updated list, the councillors who did not put three choices are guaranteed to get their first choice. In all four instances, this is true. I find it unacceptable for the council to not engage in the process in a uniform manner and would encourage you to not complete committee assignments until they have done so. Had I known this would be an effective strategy, I would have only put down a one for finance and not listed any other committees. I respect that making committee appointments is a challenging part of the role of president, and I appreciate you even asking for preferences. But to privilege those who do not respect the processes you requested it to be conducted is, in my mind, unacceptable and unjust to those who did engage fully. I ask that you please rescind these appointments and not make new appointments until you are provided a full picture of preferences, three from each councillor, or unless we are allowed to resubmit our preferences with an option to select our top one to three choices." Part of the reason why this is so frustrating to me, in addition to what I said there, is there are committee appointments that we're making today to Budget Coordinating Group, JCPC. I had stated in my initial preferences email that I wanted one committee so that I couldn't have significant time to dedicate to serving, hopefully, on one of those other ones. Now I'm concerned that I'm going to request to be on those committees because I would like to be, and because I think I do good work when I've been on them. And I'm going to be stretched extremely thin because I was placed on two committees despite requesting one, which is understandable. I submitted my top three. So I'm frustrated that I didn't get a reply to this, but I'm frustrated that there was no reinforcement of submit three or submit one to three. It can't go both ways, and this, this list of committee appointments absolutely privileged those who put just one or two. And maybe that was their strategy, and I commend you on figuring out a strategy I didn't know about. But it is absolutely not fair to the rest of us for the, for the president to go with that and accept it and not say, no, I'm not taking this until you submit all three. So either we need to redo the process and only, and say just one through three, or we need to not accept them until they're given three of them.
Okay. Alicia.
Thank you, Lynn. Is it okay if I respond to Anna's comment?
Please.
Thank you. So I'm going to speak for myself because I'm not sure if there are any other councillors who didn't put their top three choices, but I know that I did not. And so I want to, one, speak to why I did that and why I have done that in the past, and two, also respond to how the president handled that with me. And I want to say that I did only put one committee on my preference form, and that is because that is the only committee I would like to serve on. And I did also send a message to Lynn, letting her know that I do not wish to tie her hands with this decision, that I would respect if I was placed on no committee at all, but that this is the only committee because of my time constraint and my personal interests and what I hope to do with my future that I would like to serve on and would make time to serve on at this time. And that I will respect whatever decision the president makes, knowing that I might not get that choice. And Lynn did respond and ask me to resubmit my three choices and did try to place me on a different committee other than the one that I chose. So I do just want to say that in response to some of the things that you have said, just to be fully transparent about what happened between Lynn and I. At least, I don't know what happened with other councillors, but in that decision-making process.
Anna, did you have some further comment?
Yeah, Alicia, I appreciate that explanation. You were not the only one. There were. Yeah, Alicia, I appreciate that explanation. You were not the only one. There were four people who did that. And to be honest, Alicia, I said something really similar in my email about only wanting one committee due to time constraints. I didn't specify as the parts that you talked about in terms of interests, but, and I respect that you did, and I think that that's absolutely a fair thing to email, but I shouldn't have to necessarily. So for me, that's, that's where my frustration is coming through is, is where, you weren't the only one. There were, there were, I think, four folks who, who did this. And again, I'm not necessarily faulting folks, although I wish people would do one to three. But there was no formal way to say how many committees we wanted. I included that in my email, as did you. I was placed on two. I wanted one as well. But that's the way that, that, that panned out. So I'm absolutely not calling out the counselors. I'm actually calling out the process, but the way the process was conducted. And thank you.
Are there any other comments on appointments?
Yes, I'm concerned about my capacity to serve on two committees, and I'd like to be placed on one, please.
Would you communicate to me which one you would like to drop and then?
I will leave that up to you. I mean, I indicated my, my preferences here. I think I, I, what I had initially stated was I'd like to be placed on one standing town council committee so that I can seek a spot on one of the council-appointed committees.
Anna, I will make that adjustment at your request.
Thank you.
And I'll try to settle this all up by the end of the day tomorrow so that we have no more confusion on committees. We're going to go on to the other, and while I place the item in the packet, often people change their minds once they see who else is interested. Either they want to add their name or they're done. They don't. So the first one is the Budget Coordinating Group. And on, in the packet, you will see the people who have served in the last year. And you will see the people who have expressed interest in the coming year. During this past year, we have had four people. Yes.
I don't remember expressing interest specifically, so how would you have known what we were?
That's why I didn't, so now let me finish. So before we go any further, we want, I want to make sure that we understand who all either has said or now wants to make sure that they have said they are interested in the Budget Coordinating Group. Okay? So the people that did say they were interested was Mandy Jo Hanke, Andy Steinberg, Lynn Griesmer, Hala Lord, George Ryan, Anna Devlin-Gothier, and Bob Hegner. Are there other counselors that are interested in BCG? George?
I'd like to remove my name.
Okay. Are there other counselors that would like to either remove their name or have their name added?
Can you read the list again?
Yes. Mandy Jo Hanke, Andy Steinberg, Pat DeAngelis, I'm sorry, no, Lynn Griesmer, Hala Lord, Anna Devlin-Gothier, and Bob Hegner. Okay? And last year, we had four. There is no restriction on this, except that no more than two can come from the Finance Committee. And the people who are here, who are on the Finance Committee are Mandy Jo Hanke, Andy Steinberg, and Bob Hegner. Yes?
A clarification of what you just stated. No more than two can come from Finance Committee unless more than three are appointed, according to the charge. So if you appoint, if the council names four or five or six, more than two Finance can be on it.
I think that that would be correct. I'm trying to go by our rules.
That is the charge and the rules.
All right, so there are six counselors. Do we have people who would like to make statements? If so, let's begin. Counselor Hanke. Okay, Anna?
I've been interested in Budget Coordinating Group for a little while. And last year, I agreed to remove my name from BCG and instead put it on JCPC. And the reason why going to MMA, or what was it called? Connect 351? Sorry, going to the Massachusetts Municipal Association Conference this weekend titled Connect 351, there was a really interesting session that I think like 20 of us were in somehow on school funding. And one of the things that they talked about in that session was the success of a particular town in convening these, the different bodies and essentially having their own version of BCG, as well as having full meetings of those bodies. For us, that would be the schools, the library, the council. For them, it was the schools, their select board, the school committee, and their finance committee. I believe that BCG has a much more important role to play than it has been utilized for in the past few years. And part of the reason why I really would like to be on BCG is that we're looking at some pretty hard years. And I think that we need to have increased communication. I think we need more meetings at BCG. I'm not saying I can guarantee that as a member of BCG, but part of what I think this committee needs to do is really be strategic in addressing these issues that we're looking at down the road. And that, that session reinvigorated my desire to be on BCG. So a roundabout way of, I would appreciate support for my serving on BCG this year.
Are there any other counselors who would like to make comments? So the question is, there are six people interested. Do we want to go with all six? I'm sorry?
An option?
I don't see why it's not. Does anybody see that it's not an option? We usually have four. We usually had three. Then last year, we had four.
Um.
Yes.
Aren't there more than three Finance Committee?
Yes, but if we go beyond three, it can have more than two, three Finance Committee. It can have more than two Finance Committee. The only Finance Committee are Hegner, Hanke, and Steinberg, right? Kathy didn't ask for it. No. All right. Thoughts?
Does, oh, I have a clarifier. Oh, Mandy's hand. Sorry, sorry.
Yes, Counselor Hanke.
I would worry that the other elected bodies would believe we are putting in a show of force that is unnecessarily non-cooperative if we named six people. They, they seemed okay with four last year, but I, I, we need, we need a spirit of collaboration that I think naming nearly a quorum of the council to this body would not engender.
Okay. Anna, comments?
Mandy said what I was going to say.
Okay. Then, uh, I'm trying to figure out, do we go, do we just rank? Athena? We could ask people to rank their choices.
I don't have a tally sheet ready for that. I mean, that's a complicated way of doing it. You can ask for a motion to appoint all of the counselors listed, or you could do one at a time.
Andy?
There's some hands up.
You have your hand up.
Yes. You know, I've been on Budget Coordinating Group for more years because I was involved in the original Finance Committee that established a BCG. And in my role in the Finance Committee and the Select Board, I had numerous opportunities. I'm willing to cede the position, even though I'm very interested because I think that the history of the BCG is something that we should bear in mind. And I was very interested in that comments that we received from that one town manager who talked about their version of Budget Coordinating Group. Because actually, it was much more in line with what our original ECG was when it was created. And we created it for the very reasons that he spoke to, which is town meeting form of government. And it also had a traditional piece where each of the budgeting authorities gave a presentation near the beginning of meetings regarding what the budget realities were for each of their segments of government. And there was a more of a sharing than I have seen in the Budget Coordinating Group since the council was formed. I think that one of the things that no matter who ends up on it needs to be committed to is trying to work together as a committee to envision what the role is and be creative in determining the role. Because I do think that the role has evolved from its original design for the reasons that I've stated. It's something that we kind of use it as, I think, for more limited opportunities than is there. So regardless of the decision made, I won't be hurt if the decision is, he's done it so many years, we don't need him anymore. It's time to move forward. That's okay. I mean, that's a realistic decision to make. But I do encourage that the Budget Coordinating Group as a whole, under the leadership of whoever comes from this room, think very carefully about what BCG was at the beginning, what the intent was, what the intent was that it was in the Charter Commission for putting it into the Charter, what their expectations were and how it has evolved and how it should go.
Okay. Bob Hegner?
Yeah, I'll take aim off of the BCG.
So at this point, then that includes Counselor Hanke, Andy Steinberg, Lynn Griesmer, Hala Lord, and Anna Devlin-Gothier. Am I correct? That's still five.
Did, did I misunderstand Andy's comment?
Yeah, I'm trying to decide.
I, what I said was that if the decision of the group is that it's time to move on, that I totally understand. And I, my feelings will not be hurt. And I don't want you to make decisions based upon what you might perceive as my concern. I
Okay.
offered to stay in because of contribution of the history that I've had with the Budget Coordinating Group. And how it evolved, I was in the original discussion to create it from the very beginning. But that's not necessarily a reason for you to continue. And I just encourage the group to make what it determines to be the best choice.
George Ryan?
So that's actually a reason why I would very much like to see Counselor Steinberg serve on this body, but that's my own personal feeling. I'm wondering if, just to proceed, we can agree either by vote or by consensus that we want four members on this body. And that's what I'm hearing, but that may just be me. If that's the case, then we would go to a vote and we would just list our four candidates and the, the four who have the highest totals would be on.
That is certainly what we may end up doing.
But is, is that sense that four is the number people are most comfortable with, given the previous arguments that we don't want to?
I'm, yeah. Yes, I'm hearing that people are uncomfortable if we go to five. Pam Rooney, you have your hand up.
That's exactly the question I was going to ask. What, what do the other groups typically bring to the table?
Usually two?
Just two.
Each?
So we're agnostic. Presumably, we're not advocating specifically for school or library. We are advocating for the town and a balanced budget. So I don't, I, I think I would still support four people. That seems okay to me.
So it sounds as if we're agreeing that four is an okay number. We still are, have the number up. Kathy, you have your hand up?
I was just, I, I think what George said, but I couldn't hear it completely, clearly, was if we have five, let's vote on them. Because I also think it's really important that anyone who is going to be part of this stares at those budget numbers and comes very well informed to the table. Just, you know, so, and has time. So Andy, I would advocate you not pulling yourself off the list right now because you stare at the budget numbers all the time. So I just think it's an important, this year in particular, having some sense of dollars is important. Dollars everywhere, not just dollars in any one of those.
So at this point, with five, we have Counselor Hanke, Andy Steinberg, Lynn Griesmer, Counselor Lord, and Anna Devlin-Gothier. If we want to go to four, then we should just do a ranking. Name your top four.
I'm, I'm working on a tally sheet. I can have this in just a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, Pat. Go ahead. George, your hand is up. Okay. Yes, Pat?
I, I believe Heather served on it in this last year. Hala, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I first met her as Heather. And Hala is the one person of color in this list, and I would like to see her retained.
Okay, and she is not able to be with us tonight to speak on her behalf. So I think we're going to move to a tally, and the consensus seems that we should stick to four. Okay, are you sending us all something?
No, I'm setting it up now. So you're going to say your, your top four?
Sure.
Okay. Um, no, I'm just going to go through and you could say your top four.
You're going to call on counselors.
And I'll tally.
Alicia, you have your hand up.
Yeah, sorry. I'm hoping you can repeat the counselors who decided to keep their name in.
Yes, they are. Counselor Hanke, Andy Steinberg, Lynn Griesmer, Counselor Lord, Anna Devlin-Gothier. Okay? Alicia, is there any further questions?
Yes, sorry. I just have one other process question. Do you need us all to pick four? Or if I have less than four, can I do that? Or do you need me to say my top four?
You know, given the most recent comments from Anna Devlin-Gothier, I would suggest you pick four.
Are we ready?
Yep.
Are we on Counselor Ette?
I believe we are.
Counselor Ette, who are your four candidates?
Is it possible to pass at the moment? I'm still.
Sure.
Thank you.
Counselor Hanke, Andy Steinberg, Lynn Griesmer, Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Oh, okay, Mandy?
That's four names.
Yes, Counselor Hanke?
Counselors Hanke, Griesmer, Steinberg, and Devlin-Gothier.
Thank you. Counselor Hegner?
This is very difficult.
Yeah.
Counselor Hanke, Andy Steinberg, Lynn Griesmer, and Anna.
Okay, Counselor Lord is absent. Counselor Rooney?
Steinberg, Griesmer, Hanke, Anna.
Okay, Counselor Ryan? Okay, Counselor Ryan?
Counselors Hanke, Steinberg, Griesmer, Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Counselor Shane?
Yeah. You'll have to excuse me because I don't know which ones are counselors. So I'll do Andy, Lynn, Mandy, and Anna.
That works. Counselor Steinberg?
Yes, I'm in the, Counselor Hanke, Griesmer, Lord, and Devlin-Gothier.
Okay, Counselor Tob?
Counselor Steinberg, Hanke, Griesmer, and Devlin-Gothier.
Counselor Walker?
Um, I also agree that this is a tough decision. I think anyone would be great, and I'm going to go with Anna, Hala, Mandy Jo, and Lynn.
Uh, Counselor DeAngelis?
Um, I'm going to go with Hala, Lynn, Anna, and Andy.
Counselor Devlin-Gothier?
Lynn, Anna, Hala, Mandy.
Counselor Ette?
Counselor Steinberg, Counselor Hanke, Counselor Griesmer, Counselor Devlin-Gothier.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Here are the results.
And we're going to place that in a motion? Okay. So I am going to make a motion to appoint Counselor Hanke, Steinberg, Griesmer, and Devlin-Gothier to the Budget Coordinating Group effective immediately for a term to expire January 6, 2025. I seek a second.
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 Okay, then we move to.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay. So the motion's been made. It's been seconded. We'll move to a vote. Griesmer is an aye.
Aye.
Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Lord's absent.
Yes.
Pam Rooney? Aye. I'm sorry. George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Jennifer Tob?
Yes.
Alicia Walker? Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier?
Aye.
Counselor Ette?
Aye.
The votes, eleven in favor, one opposed, and one absent. Okay, the next is JCPC. The people who have submitted names, this is not exclusive of other people submitting their names, are Kathy Shane, Lynn Griesmer, who is respectfully withdrawing her name, Hala Lord, George Ryan, Anna Devlin-Gothier, and Bob Hegner. This is for JCPC. Okay? Does anybody like to, would anybody like to make comments at this time? Yes. Sure. Kathy Shane, Hala Lord, George Ryan, Anna Devlin-Gothier, and Bob Hegner. Anna, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Last year, I removed my name from BCG and Hala removed hers from JCPC. And this year, although she is not here, I'm going to remove my name from this and encourage folks to support her in this, in this, on this committee.
Okay. Kathy, you have your hand up?
Uh, I, I just have a question because I didn't pay attention when you put the information out. Are people aware that JCPC meets every week?
For about six weeks.
Yeah, for about six weeks. The last, last time, we needed a full two months.
It hasn't been set. It's only set once people are appointed.
Right, we don't have a time yet, so because we have two from schools and two from libraries, so we've got to find a time slot that works for everyone. And the, both the school and the library have not had the same people in the last two years. So you can't assume that whatever slot that worked for the other two people will work for this year's two people. So I don't know who those are, Lynn.
Yeah, I hear you.
But the library completely changed. It was two brand-new people. And actually, school, the same thing, two people who hadn't been on it before.
Right. Okay, so at this point, the, the list is Kathy Shane, Hala Lord, George Ryan, and Bob Hegner. And we appoint three.
Two have to be on finance.
Only two can come from finance, which is not a problem in this case. So.
Yes, two of whom shall be on finance committee. Three town counselors, two of whom shall be on finance.
Ah, that's the way the rules, rules.
Unless I'm reading the wrong thing. That's what the committee charge says. Seven voting members, two school committee, two library, three town counselors.
So then in that case, Hegner and Shane both have to be on. And the choice then is between Ryan and Hala Lord. Correct? Am I correct? Okay. I hate that Hala's not here to raise her own thoughts. But we need to get this committee appointed. We can't wait any longer. All right. I'm sorry. Who is their hand up? All right, let's do the same thing we did before, except we have to put both Shane and Hegner on. No. She's not. Not. So it's really between George and Hala. It's a tough choice. I'm sorry.
Should we do, do you want me to do the tally?
Yep.
Okay, Counselor Hanke?
George Ryan?
Counselor Hegner?
Counselor Lord?
Counselor Rooney?
Counselor Lord.
Counselor Ryan?
Ryan.
Counselor Shane?
Ryan.
Counselor Steinberg?
Lord.
Counselor Tob?
Lord.
Counselor Walker?
Counselor Lord.
Counselor DeAngelis?
George.
Counselor Devlin-Gothier?
Counselor Lord.
Counselor Ette?
Counselor Ryan.
And Counselor Griesmer?
Can we have four? Okay. I'm voting for Ryan, so it's a tie. George?
I withdraw my name.
All right. So the motion for JCPC is as follows. To appoint counselors Shane, Lord, and Hegner to the Joint Capital Planning Committee effective immediately for terms to expire January 6, 2025. Is there a second?
Second, Ryan.
Then we begin the vote, and Counselor Hanke? Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Counselor Lord is absent. Pam Rooney?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane? Stein, Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Jennifer Tob?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier?
Aye.
Counselor Ette?
Aye.
Counselor Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke, we've done. Okay, so it is eleven, no, it's ten in favor, one opposed, one abstention, and one absent. Got it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so now we go on to the next area. And first of all, let me just, on the four towns meeting, as we have often.
Um, sorry, point of order. The appointment for the JCPC, the term expires January 6, 2026, not 2025. Just a correction.
Thank you. Hey, by the way, the earlier ones also were 2026 for BCG. A little fact-checking going on back here in the audience?
BCG is just for 2025. Oh, so it expires in 2026?
It's 2026. Okay. Okay. The representatives to speak on behalf of the council at the four towns meeting to authorize the town council president and chair of the finance committee to speak on behalf of the town council at the 2024 four towns meetings, is there a second? I'm sorry? Okay, is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second?
Second.
Okay, second. Mandy Jo, you have your hand up. And I, I was going to mention that you mentioned to me in this. Go ahead.
So I actually, having thought about this, believe it is a mistake to quote, well, to authorize someone to quote, two people to quote, "speak on behalf of the town council" and quote at these meetings. We as a council tend not to vote on any positions before we go to these meetings. We have financial guidelines that everyone can read. We speak during these breakout sessions at these meetings, but we don't take any positions at those breakout sessions. And the person that summarizes them should not be seen as speaking on, quote, "behalf of the council." And so I think, given some of the things that have happened and been said as summary after these meetings, to actually vote as a council to designate two people to speak on behalf of us when we don't actually take positions regarding what is discussed at these meetings prior to the meetings, a lot of times because we don't know what's going to be discussed at the meetings. Not that we're not doing our job, but we're literally presented with the information that morning and are asked to talk about our thoughts on it. But if we've designated, formally designated, two people to speak on behalf of, that could be seen as adopting positions when we haven't actually adopted positions. So this is a motion I will be voting against.
Okay. Oh, are there any other comments at this time? Um, I, okay, I'm going to call on you in a moment, but Jennifer?
Um, I guess I'm asking for some clarification. I was thought that when a counselor spoke on behalf of the council at a four towns meeting, there had been some agreement about the gist of what would be said, that it wasn't just that person's personal remarks. Is that correct?
Having been the person who has often spoken as has Andy, what I, I've tried to do is summarize what has been said when we have that little caucus, which sometimes we have a quorum of the council there, sometimes we don't. I mean, I totally understand Counselor Hanke's point. And so it's, um, anyway, I totally understand the point. And having said that, and then summarizing periodically after that, different counselors will make additional comments, and that's also fine. So.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with Counselor Hanke either. I just, that was my impression.
Yeah.
That that's, it wasn't so much speaking for the council as somebody had to speak and, and, and give a summary of what had been said during the breakout session.
It's really a summary. But the way the motion is written, it sounds as if we've taken a vote. And that's what the concern is. George Ryan, Counselor Ryan?
So if we don't appoint someone officially, then, and we have a four towns meeting, and we then have our little caucus, I take it at the caucus, someone will be appointed to summarize our comments. Is that how it's going to play out? I mean, I'm not against that. I'm just wondering what.
It's just to summarize.
In the past, it's nice to know that X is going to be the person who's going to, but if X is not there, then we're going to have to find somebody else. And we don't know who's going to be there sometimes, and things happen. So I'm kind of wondering, what's the point of even formally appointing someone? At this point, I guess I'm struggling, other than just, we know X is going to be the spokesperson, but that could easily be handled at the moment.
Bob Hegner?
My experience with the four towns meeting has been that we need to be very careful about what we say because things can be misinterpreted, they can be taken out of context. So whoever does speak on, you know, for Amherst has to really hedge what they say. As I've spoken a couple of times as the chair of the finance committee, and I can only say, this is what our, you know, interim budget guidelines, you know, state. And we don't know what our final budget's going to be. We won't know that until June, so, or, you know, May. So one has to be very careful. So just bear that in mind, whomever we choose, if we choose someone, that we need to make sure we choose someone who can be, you know, thoughtful in, in terms of what they say.
Andy, I'm sorry, I skipped over you. I apologize for that.
It's okay. I think I'm inclined to go with the position, with the suggestion that we not appoint anyone now and that, that a decision as to who speaks can be made at the four towns meeting at the conclusion of the caucus. Somebody who is, and I think at that point, we will judge who has been a good spokesperson for the day during the discussion and who we have confidence can carry through. I wonder if we would be better off not making a designation in advance.
I'm, is there any other comments? If, yes, Pat?
I'm just wondering, I was listening to Andy's comment, and I'm wondering, doesn't that take, it could take up a lot of time to decide who that person is at the meeting, and that feels kind of awkward, or, I don't know.
I'm comfortable with it. Pam?
Point of order, so.
Withdraw the motion.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll ask that the person that seconded it would.
Thank you.
Agree to withdraw.
I agree.
Okay, thank you. The next thing that I do want to just note and thank are continued counselors who have been on the elementary school building committee. Clearly, this has been a banner year, Kathy and Alicia. And also the Jones Library Building, even today, another two-hour-and-15-minute meeting. Yes, thank you, Pam, so much. Okay, so now we come to DPW and Fire EMS station. The people that have expressed interest are Andy Steinberg, Kathy Shane, Pat DeAngelis, Lynn Griesmer, Hala Lord, Pam Rooney, and Anna Devlin-Gothier. Pat, you have your hand up. Okay. Counselor Hanke, you have your hand up.
I mean, I, I will say I struggle with this. I am interested, yet at the same time, we haven't seen a charge. We don't know how many counselors will be designated. We don't know what the charge says. We don't know what the timeframe of the charge is. So how can I pick people, or how can I even express interest myself when I don't have any parameters to base my interest on at all? I think this motion or this designation is completely premature until a charge has actually been adopted by the manager and provided us.
Anna? Anna, comments?
Completely agree, I think, I don't understand why we're doing this tonight without a charge, and why not wait until we have a charge and then vote once we see what that charge is, or charges, depending on how it shakes out. I, I won't support bringing this motion forward.
Okay, Andy?
No, I was actually going to ask to withdraw for the very reasons that we talked about, I don't, uh, feel comfortable being selected for a position that hasn't been defined yet.
Okay, George?
I agree, it's premature, I would ask that it be withdrawn.
Okay, then I will, uh, the motion never, never was made, so we're going to pass this one off.
Withdraw the idea.
Okay, and let me just mention, on the issue of liaisons, I did not collect people's interests, because GOL, first of all, has to decide which committees we're going to do liaisons to. And, one of the things that I would just like to mention with regard to that is, ask yourself, not which committees want to have liaisons, but which committees do we feel should have liaisons? Okay? Kathy?
Um, I, just to the topic that we quickly took off the table, which I'm fine with, the DPW Fire Committee, I do hope that Paul would get us a charge sooner rather than later, so it could start meeting, and secondly, my experience on the elementary school building committee, which I will admit is the only one I've ever been on, is that, to the extent possible, and it's very, it's very structured in terms of slots, because the school building authority says you've gotta have one of these, and two of those, and some others, but I would have really hoped to have an engineer, an architect, you know, some people, because these are, these are buildings, you know, so Paul, Paul will have to create this out of whole cloth, where MSBA said superintendent of schools, a principal of facilities, you know, we had a thirteen member committee with, without designated, but I think this, the skill set from this is, is gonna be important.
Okay. So let me just summarize, we have appointed people to BCG, we've appointed people, counselors, I'm sorry, we have appointed counselors who are people to BCG, we have appointed counselors who are people to JCPC, we have decided that on the day of four towns meetings, there will be a discussion, and then an agreement upon who will speak. To summarize, carefully summarize, and then the, we've decided to delay recommending to the town manager members for DPW and Fire and EMS. Okay? With that, we are now going to take a break. I think it's a better time to take one now than later. So, let's take a ten minute break, come back at quarter of eight, and at that point, we are going to dive into the town managers' goals. Five minute of, five minutes of eight, is that what I said? A quarter, we're taking a break now, we will reconvene at seven fifty-five. Thank you. Please turn your mics off and your picture, and turn them back on when you return. Oh yeah, we do. We are going to reconvene. Please turn your videos back on. Do not turn your sound back on. Counselor Walker, are you there?
Yes, I am, thank you Lynn.
Thank you. Counselor Ette, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. All right. Before, later on in the meeting, I do wanna ask people to summarize very quickly some of their highlights of the MMA conference, but before we go there, prior to going to the MMA, we once again sent you the goals that the, um, GOL has been noodling over. In fact, GOL actually did meet one more time in January, and voted the goals that were in your packet the last time. Our goal last time was not to have a discussion, our goal tonight is to do the following. To go through the goals, we're gonna go in reverse order, so we don't get stuck on the first one and then never get to the last one, okay? We are, the goal, we, we wanna assume that at this point, the council has reached consensus on the six goal areas and the statements of the objective. That doesn't mean we might not come back to them, it's just for the moment, we're gonna assume that. The purpose of our discussion tonight is to reach a shared understanding of the meaning of each action item recommended by GOL. Okay? And then, to ensure the list of action items reflect all of the counselor's proposed action items for the town manager, even though later on, we're gonna eliminate some, okay? The goal tonight's not to debate the action items, it's to make sure that if you have any additional action items you want on there, you add them. At your own peril, but you add them, okay? Then, at the retreat, then after tonight's meeting, we, we are going to ask you to rank goals, I'm sorry, prioritize, prioritize goals as high, medium, low, or possibly eliminate after tonight, not tonight, after tonight, but, I'm sorry, action items, thank you. Athena?
If I may?
Yes.
Um, we're, we're still working out the process of this prioritization, because there are some goals that, from the council discussion, counselors feel like are easy, and it doesn't make sense to have to rank something that is an e- easy goal in terms of high, medium, low priority, if it's something that will most certainly be accomplished. So, we're going to work out a process, so everyone's on the same page about how we do this in a way that makes sense, given the goals that we have at the end of the night tonight.
Right, and I wanna thank Anna, George, Athena, for working on this process with us, we basically did a planning meeting. And then, on the actual retreat night, which is February fourth, we will feed you, is, did you say not pizza? All right, we'll put that request in. And then, our, our goal then, and we will describe that more in full after tonight, is to come to some final consensus. Meantime, we also wanna invite the town manager to weigh in at any time and say, whatever he feels he needs to, like, this is ridiculous, there's no way we can do this, or, gee, aren't we already doing that, or, gee, this is, sounds like an interesting challenge, whatever. Okay? Anna, and I'm gonna invite Anna and George and Athena to add to anything I just said.
Um, I wanna clarify one thing and drive home another point, so first off, just because we are already doing something, doesn't mean we still don't want it as an action item here, so, he can note that he, we are currently doing something, but again, if the council feels that that work is a priority for continuation, it should still be on the action items list. And then the other thing is, it sounds like we're getting into semantics, but there's big difference between ranking and prioritizing, so as, once that email comes out, once we figure out kind of the, the logistics of it, please bear in mind, we're asking for priority levels, we're not asking you to rank the goals against each other, that's where we came into the issue last year of different sized goals, right? So, please, 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 just putting the thought in your brain now, to keep it there and let it grow, is we're asking for priorities.
George or Athena, anything else you wanna add? George? Athena?
No, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Hanke?
I just have a question before we start conversation, you, you mentioned adding whatever we, any other goals- any other goals we might, action items we might want in, in, but I think some of your communications about tonight's plan also included that we would get on the same page or attempt to get on the same page with what each of these means.
Yes.
So is that, so if we have those questions as we go through each of these or each big section, we should ask what is people's understanding of this, too?
That is, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. Andy?
Yeah, following up, I think a little bit on what Counselor Hanke was just saying. What I would be interested in as we go into the action items and particularly the ones that are marked as new. If, and when they're reported and described, if we could make sure that there's some understanding as to whether they came from the committee or from another member of the council, doesn't have to be a name attached to it. And, but why this was suggested or any background information that would make us understand the intent of the party that suggested it.
Okay, Kathy?
Yeah, I think I said this when I initially saw this action list. We have, if people haven't counted 37 actions. And as far as I can see, there are 10, as many as 10, that we really never had any discussion about some, Andy, when you just said rationale. But I also thought our goal here is to focus the town manager on staff that are, on things that are really a high priority. And we know the staff shortages, so I thought we were going to try to avoid new things that require staff, extra staff to work on them, or new things that would require new items in the operating budget, since our budget is tight. And so when I went through these, so, and then the last would be things that we've talked about and there's some consensus, rather than just somebody would like to have it on. So I, I see things that either, there hasn't been a long discussion with a reach of consensus, or brand new, it would be new staff time, and I can't understand why it rises to the top. So, and 37 seems like a lot. You know, so, so I'll just, when we go through them, that's, my screen is going through, does this new require staff to make it work, like new committees?
Okay.
Okay.
I, I understand that. Athena, go ahead.
So the, the goals for the evening tonight are to reach a shared understanding of what the actions are that counselors have proposed. So some of the questions about where they came from is for the meeting tonight, and then ensuring that the list reflects all the action items that counselors want included in the list. And then at the retreat, to your point, Kathy, that would be the point at which the council has a conversation about where the priorities are, what the resources are required for each goal and so on. So that part of the conversation will happen, but it will be at the, at the retreat rather than tonight.
Okay, Jennifer?
So a counselor explains why they proposed a certain action item, but you were saying tonight is not, not when we debate it, so?
We're not going to debate action items tonight. We're looking for clarity, meaning?
Okay, so that's going to take a lot of discipline?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And my goal is that we're going to spend no more than 15 minutes on each goal.
So if someone were to say why they, there's a goal, an action item, an action item.
Right.
If we disagree with it, we don't say that?
That is correct, not tonight, okay?
It's going to be really hard. Okay, thank you.
Discipline, okay? All right, we're starting with, and we're going to put them up on the screen. The last one, Town Council, Community, and Strategic Relationships. Okay, it has three action items under it. Those three action items are on the screen. Is there anybody who needs clarification on what pursue strategic partnership agreements with Amherst College and Hampshire College? Anybody who needs clarification on that? Can we make this slightly larger? I don't know. Ah, excellent. Okay.
I don't think that's a new one. Wasn't that basically in?
It isn't a new one. You're correct. It's not properly classified. It's continuing. Okay, is there any question on that? I'm seeing no hands. I'm going to go to the next one. The next one is work with our legislators to explore the possibility of state level payment and move tax pilot legislation regarding nonprofits. Counselor Hanke, you have your hand up.
I have a question about, the same question for both this one and the next one, which is if there is supposed to be no ambiguity as to whether a goal was completed, what is the intention of what work with legislatures means as it with respect to the manager? Because that has a wide range of actions, all to having one conversation, to helping write legislation, to anything in between.
Okay.
I agree. I think it could, it's a wide range when you say work with, obviously, it's, it the question for the council is, how would you prioritize this when we get to that part of it? And I think, you know, just even prioritizing between these two and submitting legislation can be an action item. It, I think that our time is spent, better spent on things that will get through the legislature, not just to be submitting things unless there's a strategy involved in submitting things to the legislature, which there sometimes is. That sometimes the legislature, when they get a certain quantum of requests from local cities and towns, then they start to pay attention, but just one off, if some of these things just won't go through, we ought to be realistic and talk with our legislators about what's realistic. I think they don't want to put effort into things just to be performative. They want to put effort into things that are going to be actually actionable. And I think it'd be worthwhile, the one on the state owned land is something I think worth, definitely worth pursuing. Seeking pilots from pilot legislation regarding nonprofits, that's a really big world because it really is controlled by hospitals and other nonprofits. You know, we're a small fish in that, that initiative.
Okay. Bob Hagner?
Yeah, um since, well, Anna knows this, the, and there's a new report out by the state auditor on pilots for state on land. It doesn't cover UMass. So I would like to see UMass put in here specifically. And the state on land, it's, it's I mean, I don't know what the status of that is. That report, Athena is going to copy for everyone and, and send them, send a PDF around, but I'm not sure what the status of that report is. It's sort of like a a finding by the state auditor. It's not really set in concrete, but there's a suggestion about revising the formula for pilot for state on land, but not UMass. And UMass is what really matters in this town, so I would like to see UMass in this.
I just want to, okay, so the one suggestion is on the state owned land, we somehow or another say including UMass. Okay, that's a word clarif, that's a clarification of statement. But what we're starting to get into is the debate on the value, and we're not doing that tonight, okay? But I appreciate the idea that under the state owned land, which is the third one, it includes including UMass, okay? Pam Rooney?
I had actually a question on the one above that, which is to regarding nonprofits. And it wasn't clear to me if that included our institutions of a higher ed, that would, that would be the one that I would focus on.
That does include your private higher ed institutions. But not public. It includes private higher eds, yes. Anna?
I wanted to offer a point of clarification, if that's okay, instead of, so the point of clarification, I don't know if it answers the question, but to add context of discussion, there was discussion at GOL regarding the specificity for goals similar to this, where you see work with or pursue words like that. GOL did discuss not stating achieve this item because it's not fully under Paul's control. There was discussion about specifying a number of meetings or what that would look like, but ultimately GOL decided against doing that for the, for these action items. And then the other clarification is that, I think Lynn just said nonprofits would include our private institutions of higher education, meeting Hampshire College and Amherst College, and state owned land absolutely does include UMass. I wanted to clarify, the auditor's report doesn't omit UMass. It merely does not take into account the use of the land, which is what this goal gets at.
Thank you. Paul?
So two things, I think, you know, we should recognize the context of the auditor's report, that the auditor is in a battle with the legislature. And in terms of if this goal is about moving something forward through the legislature, I don't think the auditor's report is going to carry much weight. I think there's a political game going on that I'm not fully savvy to, but, and I would suggest that I look at the bottom goal and I think what our goal is, is to work with our legislators to increase payments in lieu of taxes involving state owned land in Massachusetts. That's what we want to do. We want to get more money on state owned land in Massachusetts and Amherst. And I think we could simplify it in like, whether it's just more money coming into the pot, that's good. If it's revising the formula, that's good. If it's, it doesn't, I don't know if legislation is really the, the end game here.
Okay. Kathy?
I, I think Paul said part of what I was, I think could be simplified to just be payment in lieu of taxes for either of these, but there are, there have periodically been bills and some people, some towns have joined coalitions. So when we say what does work mean? It might be that there, something starts moving, and I think it will be as much on us as counselors as it is on the town manager, because I went to about five pilot discussions over the past year or so. But just was listening to see if anything was actually moving as a piece of legislation.
Right, yeah. Andy?
Yeah, I don't want to get into this tonight. I think it should wait until to get into detail when we have our next session on this. Both of these items are actually covered in the MMA resolution on budget that we just confirmed at the annual meeting. And the context of that came out of discussions in the committee on which I sit, so that I could talk, go into it further, but I think that it's, this isn't the proper place.
Okay, are there any other comments on these goals? Paul, you still have your hand up. Okay. I, Counselor Hanke?
I have some to add to this section.
Yes.
Is this the time?
Yes.
One, a question about, but one of them is begin negotiating a new strategic partnership agreement with UMass. I believe it is up in 2027 and last year, last time, it took four years to negotiate, so I, I think we need to add that one. And the other one is offer to meet with each counselor individually at least twice per year.
Okay. Is there anybody that needs clarification on either of those? Seeing none, are there any other comments on this goal? Bob Hagner?
Yeah, I would like to see something on improving communication with residents, because I think my experience in talking to my constituents is that they rarely hear back from the town, if anything. And any official of the town, in fact, I've been praised by some as, you know, you get back to me, I, no one else does, you know? So I think it's important that we improve our communication. And also, I think the town website could be improved. It's, I mean, I know that costs money and all, but boy, it's, it's not very user friendly. And I would like to see it be more user friendly.
I think you should put website on as a separate one. And I want to go back on the improving communications with residents. I have a clarifying question. Is that with regard to the town manager for whom these goals are written, or is that with regard to counselors?
Well, I, I would, I would, it's townwide. I mean, it's, it's under the, the town manager's purview for all town employees of the town to better communicate to residents. And then it's obviously about, it's on us as well to better communicate, but
Okay.
My, my, you know, my, what I'm, aiming at here is for the town employees to better communicate.
Okay, are there any other, Anna, you have your hand up?
I have a clarifying question for Bob. I'd like to know how that's measured. So this is something that GOL did discuss, but I, I'd like to know what better communicate means, because I think that there's a spectrum and ultimately the litmus test that we are asking ourselves is at the end of the year, how do we know if this has been complete to our satisfaction or not? So my, my question, my clarifying question to you, don't need an answer now, but something I'd love to kind of noodle a little bit more is what better looks like? And then the other clarifying question is if you could also specify how that is different than the, we aren't there yet, and I'm not jumping there, but I'm not saying it's the same thing, but if you could specify how it is different than the goal, the action item under the administration and leadership goal area, which is clarifying to the public regarding requests and complaints. I, I do think understand what you're saying in terms of how it might be different, but just to that was our effort at picking one element of better communication for the coming year with, within GOL. So if we could drill down to kind of what's the checkbox of better communication, that would be, that'd be great.
Okay. Paul, you have your hand up?
Yeah, just as an interim measure, if you have constituents or anyone that feels like they haven't gotten a response from me or from anybody else, please just send them to me so I can follow up, because we don't know about it. And we don't, I hate the idea of someone being frustrated because they haven't gotten response, which happens. But if we, if I know who we can follow up on, I can have appropriate person follow up, and we will do that. Yeah.
As do I. Thank you. Bob, you have your hand up, but I assume you don't. We are done with this goal, okay? We're moving on to the next goal, which is infrastructure management, maintenance, and land stewardship to maintain and manage the town's capital and public assets. We're starting at the top. Are there any clarifying questions on the first one, which is form and appoint a building committee to make progress on the fire and DPW buildings? Anna?
My clarifying, hmm, it's not a question. No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use my discipline. Nope. It's more, it's more of a
Next one.
Pointed question.
Jennifer, do you have a clarifying question on this one?
Well, again, I'm sure GOL discussed it, but how would you measure progress? Like, if the committee is formed?
The committee is formed?
Okay, well, no, it says to make progress. Maybe it's a
That's the, no, it says form and appoint a building committee.
The actions are to form and appoint.
So whether the committee makes progress is a different.
That's very different. Yes. Pam Rooney, you have your hand up?
Yes, similarly, similar topic. There's also three, three, four items down is present schematic designs to the council for the DPW. I think if that actually, I want to reword it, but I think it ought to go up there with appoint the building committee and get some steps accomplished. So I, I'm trying to merge two blocks into one.
Okay.
Can, can I?
Yes.
And before, are we, are we presenting new wording right now or not?
No, we're looking for clarifications and if necessary wording, yes. So you're suggesting that, go back up to the one above, Athena. Form and appoint a fire EMS and DPW building committee and present, you're suggesting merging those.
Please wait, I'm sorry. This is the part that gets me really stressed out is when we start doing the changes in real time without responding to the, the rationale for them being separate, if we could.
Anna, do you want to talk about the rationale?
Yes, so this was something GOL talked about a lot. We sometimes get fixated on the number 37, right? And we want to merge things, no, not you, not you. We as a committee often got fixated on it, on a number. And we would find ourselves combining action items into one thing, saying, oh, we did a good job.
a good job reducing the number of goals, but the reality is the amount of work is the same. So what we were trying to do is make it so that each action item is one specific action. So that's why it's broken out. And then the other part, my hands raised for a separate question. So does that answer? I think that, I just wanted to provide the rationale as to why those were two separate items.
I was actually trying to achieve more in the one, in the one action by, by yes, getting a committee going, but also making some progress on steps toward design and construction.
I understand that.
So I'm happy to leave it separate, but we should at least then put the two items next to each other, so that they don't get lost.
We can absolutely reorder them. I think the reason was as we go through and do an evaluation, if one is achieved and not the other, we're left with that middle ground rating again, right? And so we want to be able to say yes, no to each one.
Jennifer, do you have a comment on this?
Sorry, I had a separate question, if you're jumping me, because I was responding to him. I had a separate clarifying question.
Hold on, let's get this done. Okay, clarifying question, yes.
My clarifying question, and I had phrased it as a clarifying question, was have we, as a council, had a discussion that I am forgetting regarding forming and appointing a singular building committee versus two building committees for the fire and DPW? And my proposed wording change would be to break those out.
We, as a council, have not had that discussion. The county, the town manager, however, who appoints this committee, has continually talked about it being a joint committee.
I understand that the town manager has done that. I was not sure if the council had had that conversation.
No. Okay. We've, is there any other comment on either the first or the second, which is now present schematic design? Okay. We're going on to the next one, which is to assess the current condition of the wastewater treatment plant and present a plan that will address these issues with the future goal of developing a funding plan for improvements and repairs. Counselor Hanke.
I have a request to modify the last clause of that. I don't know whether, I thought we maybe had discussed this at the last meeting, but I could be remembering that wrong. Instead of with a future goal of developing a funding plan for improvements and repairs, I would request it get changed or an option be left of including a plan to fund improvements and repairs, so that we have a plan in the next calendar year. It might be listed as an option for wording at this point, but
A plan for, including
Funding plan, plan for funding, either way works for me.
Including a, a funding plan for improvements and repairs. Are there any other comments on that one? Counsel, yes, Counselor Bockelman.
I, I guess what I would want to know is when do you want to have the conversation about what's realistic in com, in terms of accomplish, being able to get accomplished in the next 11 months?
I
Tonight or is that the next meeting? Next meeting?
So the, the next, during the retreat, that will be the conversation?
During the retreat. And I, and I think Paul, what we really want you to do is, as we finished and I prepare for that, okay? Is there any other question on that? And is there any other question on this one with the changes that were made? Okay. Maintain a list of prioritized future road and sidewalk repairs and new sidewalks that is available to the public and updated annually. Counselor Hanke.
I don't think this is a new one.
Okay, I think it's ongoing. I agree.
But I actually, I have a different one, I guess, that relates to this. And I guess I would propose it as an alternate to this.
Okay, why don't we
So I don't know when you want that.
Why don't we list in the same box an alternate wording? Go ahead.
I hadn't thought of wording, but facilitate a conversation with the town council on how the, to prioritize future road and sidewalk repairs and new sidewalks. So it might not be the best wording, but what I'm getting at is a list is fine, but a lot of times, we might dispute how that list came about. And it might be nice for the council to actually converse with someone as to how we would like to see prioritization. Do we want to prioritize the building of new sidewalks or the repair of sidewalks? Do we want to prioritize X roads in X location or types of roads, complete streets and building of that things? That's, it, it might not be best worded, but that's my thinking that, and it might be an alternate to that, or it could be a new one.
Lynn, if I may?
Yes.
I would just like to offer the council to hold the words, the actual words in the document loosely at this point, since there will be an opportunity at the retreat to tinker once the list is
Right.
Agreed upon.
Thank you. Pam Rooney?
Thanks. I actually had some different wording, again, for that same condition of the wastewater treatment plant. And it was more to the effect of address critical infrastructure needs for water and sewer to comply with state and federal health standards and laws.
Could you give it to, that to us again? Would you repeat that?
It's address critical infrastructure needs for water and sewer to comply with state and federal laws.
Okay. Is there any person that needs clarification on that? Anna?
Could you specify how that is?
It's, it's that
Sorry, no, I'm, I'm looking at the two, and they seem like two different things. And so I'm, I'd like to hear more clarification on how, why the, but see, I'm, I feel like I'm breaking the rule, because I'm asking for rationale.
You want clarification.
But I, yeah, but clarification is opinion, so I'll, I'll wait, I'll wait, I'll wait.
Okay. Counselor Hanke, you still have your hand up? Okay. We skip back to wastewater.
My hand is still up for something separate.
Are we done with wastewater? Anna?
So I, I think I'm a bit confused on the rules, and I'd like clarification. I had alternate, I wanted to break a rule into two. I, I'm sorry, a rule. And cut the rules of procedure out of my brain. I wanted to break an action item into two action items would now be the time to do that. Okay. So I would like to have the alternate wording for the first action item on this list. Read form and appoint building committees for the fire and DPW buildings respectively.
Paul, I think that it would be important for the retreat that you present your rationale for having one committee. Okay? Okay. The, I'm, I'm wondering if there should be, the line should be removed there. Oops. Wow. Leave it the way it is, we'll deal with it later. Okay, moving on. We need to go down below roads. Are there any other comments on the roads and sidewalks? Okay. Propose a fee, an entry fee for outside entities municipalities when conduct, connecting to the town of Amherst water and/or sewer systems. Questions, comments? Pam Rooney?
I'd like to add, and, and new users.
I'm sorry, and
And new, new users, which implies not necessarily outside entities or municipalities. I'm thinking people within Amherst.
Okay, so municipality slash and new users. It should just be a slash, new users. Up above, after municipality should be a slash? Yep, you got it. Thank you. So in other words, if a new subdivision comes in, there's a joining fee. Got it. Okay? Anything else on that one?
Clarifying question?
Uh, yes.
You're saying, did you say subdivision? What if a person who's not on the town sewer wants to join? Is that, is that
That would be the same thing. That would be a new user.
An individual.
It would be an individual and/or a group of homes. Yeah. Or a new building. Okay? Counselor Hanke, you have your hand up?
I could just ask for next week's retreat. Could you have information available, Paul, as to what the joining fees are now and for who they apply? Thanks.
Thank you. It's a nice way of asking for the retreat. Thank you. Propose a plan to develop, oh, I'm sorry, you have your hand up? Pam, still? Kathy, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'll bring some information too, because in some towns, they have something called, well, impact fee or a linkage fee, which is this kind of concept. And there's at least one town that has it on the books and has been able to withstand the challenge that it's a tax rather than a fee.
Okay.
Okay.
Just put in the, in parentheses, maybe behind sewer systems, such as linkage fees.
No, I'm just saying that you have to be careful how you do this, that it doesn't look like a tax.
Got it. Next one. Any problem going forward? Okay. Propose a plan to develop options for disposal of town-owned and unused properties. Counselor Hanke.
I just have a clarification on this. Is this meant to be any town-owned unused properties? Like when GOL was discussing this, or did they discuss specific properties in, all, in terms of like, yeah?
May?
Please.
We did not discuss specific properties, otherwise we would have listed them here.
Thanks, Anna. Bob Hegner?
We have a policy that we developed on disposal of these properties. How would the plan be different than what our policy states?
This came from a counselor, so you'd have to ask whoever sent this in.
I don't remember who sent it in.
I can, I can search back, but I do not recall either.
Okay. We do have a policy. There is no question about that. What we haven't done is, the town manager has not come to us, or we have not come to him and said, we think it's time for us to dispose of this property. Can we proceed with that? That's, it's, the carryover would be the policy, but no, it's really new. We haven't disposed of any town properties. Uh, no. It's new.
I thought it was this year, but I have to go back and look. I can't remember.
Paul, you have your hand up?
Yeah, so just to be clear, we're talking about real estate holdings, not
Yes.
Not
I think that would be a good thing to clarify. Of town-owned or unused real estate versus vehicles. Right. Kathy?
I'm, I've really been trying to avoid wordsmithing, so I don't want you to type this in, but part of the issue is, we do have a policy, once we decide it's surplus, okay? But before we decide it's surplus, one might want to say, how do you want to redevelop it? Or do you want to RFP it, or do you just want to sell it? And those are the options. And to my knowledge, we just don't have any process that lends itself. So we just have properties with the doors locked.
So are you suggesting
So I think the wording of this is okay. The intent is to get some thinking before we want to do something with it, on what we could do with it and how we might do it. You know, so East Hampton went through a whole process of options, that they settled on a few. So I think this wording is okay, is, the intent is not the staff should figure out how to dispose these, but really, developing options is, is my emphasis when I read this.
Thank you. Paul, do you have your hand up? Anna?
I think I just pulled up our policy. In reading this goal, given the policy, it sounds like what the goal is asking is for the town manager to come forward and say, like Kathy was saying, come forward with a list of, these are the properties I believe we should be deeming surplus, because as part of the policy, the town manager shall notify the town council that any town and property is no longer required for public purpose and maybe deem surplus and present the council with a request for disposition of the property. So I think it sounds like what we're asking Paul to do is do that, is do basically an inventory. So this goal could be clarified a bit more, I think.
Okay. Thank you. Next one. Sign a contract and break ground on the Jones Library renovation and expansion project. Bob Heg, Anna, you have your hand up?
What's left over?
Bob Hegner?
This should, I think, be clarified or qualified, because we haven't, as a council, decided to do the project, number one. And number two, it's not clear that the project is viable, because the Section 106 review has even been completed. So I don't, it just seems like we need to say, you know, maybe if, you know, all the, you know, if, if the funding is sufficient, if, or if the, the MOU has been, the funding, you know, is, with respect to the MOU is completed or whatever, you know, something, something, we have to have something in here, I, I think.
Pam Rooney?
He said it for me.
Okay. I, I beg to differ. At this point, the town council has approved this project. If a different decision is made, it's a different vote of the council. We voted the money. If we don't want the project, it's got to be a different vote. Andy?
Well, I just wonder about all of the projects, we should be going back to just the original revision, which was that it was our goal to complete the four projects as developed and promoted by, and approved by the council. And why we're breaking them into pieces and why we're getting into this fine wording. I mean, we, we had a goal that, I think, was broad and covered this, and we're breaking it into pieces and driving ourselves crazy.
Paul? No, I'm sorry, Pat.
Okay, I, I guess I don't even see the need for this action item, because if everything goes through with the review and everything, and we've made a commitment, we have voted to complete the project, so that would be a normal course of action, which would be to sign a contract and then go ahead and break ground. So I, I don't see that even, that it should even be in here. I mean, I'm advocating, I guess, but it just seems like
A point of order.
Yes.
At this point, we're, we're looking for questions and clarification of a goal, rather than debating the merits of it.
Thank you. So Pam? Kathy?
I, I agree with Pat as a simple solution, because otherwise, do we want to put the elementary school, make sure it adheres to the schedule, stay on top of the contractor? Because this is, this is also in the yikes world, because it started four months late. So deleting it would be the easiest thing, because I think Bob's point is where the financial docs are not necessarily in order yet. So we don't want the manager to sign it unless he's got the money in place. But removing it will remove all the discussion about what the best words are. So I want to leave this on. I know, Athena, we're not supposed to be doing this now, but it, it removes the need to rewrite it if we remove it.
Just put in parentheses, potentially move, potentially delete. Jennifer?
I agree.
Okay. Moving on, George.
So if I find other items in this list that I'd like to remove, I can also raise that objection. Is that correct? Even though that's not what the instructions were?
That's not the instruction.
The instructions were to complete for clarification, ask clarifying questions?
I
So we leave this for a discussion for the retreat?
I, I think we have to leave I, I think we have to leave this on here.
We don't put brackets around anything?
I'm just making a note, that's all. I don't wanna get into more deletes. Jennifer?
Say, I, I do think it's helpful having that in brackets, because it, it may keep us from having a long, at least it flags us that we may not need to have a long discussion about this after retreat.
All right, can we? Counselor Hanke?
Can I add that same wording in brackets to things I'd like to see deleted, then?
No. If that's gonna cause the problem, then remove the word, potentially delete, and leave it there. We know what it means. That's all we're doing. Okay. Okay. Update the five-year capital improvement program in light of the 2024 revisions to the financial plan for major capital projects. Is there clarifying questions? Bob?
Uh, I would just like to add also, we in accordance with the the current budget guidelines, because we do talk about the five-year, five-year budgets and that.
Okay. All right, it's, now is the time to ask any other questions of clarification, and are there additions? Bob, you have your hand up, and I assume you don't want to. Okay, we're going on to the next goal. The next goal is administration and leadership. The first item for action is to clarify to the public what departments manage which services and where and how complaints or requests for help regarding those services should be made. Uh, Bob, you have your hand up? Bob, you have your hand up? Okay, are there clarif-, Kathy?
Not on this one line, but can I just point out to everyone that the text before that talks about, uh, finances? And when we look at, when you look at the list, you're never gonna find the word finance.
I want you to make sure that you ask to add something when we get to that point.
Okay, it's just, just even in the order, I would make it a number one here. If, if the other thing is written the way it is.
We'll add it, and then we can reorder, okay? Explore strategic options for making Amherst Town Government employment a more attractive and rewarding place to work, considering access to continuing education, supervision, and leadership training. Kathy?
Yes. The clarification is, I'm not sure that we have a problem with making it attractive to work, so I don't know how this got on the list. And my second was what I said as a prologue. Are we talking about adding costs for employees? And later, we have a salary review and some things, so I think we should be competitive. But I'm not sure how this got on the list.
Okay. Anna?
So this was one that ultimately came out of being from GOL. This is something that had incorporated several, I'm sorry, I'm relying a bit on memory here, but had incorporated, um, a few other ideas that folks had had. It also came out of folks reading of, um, staff evaluations in the past and continuously thinking about professional development and growth opportunities as we look at a challenging job market. So that, all of that was wrapped up in this. There were questions, initial goals that had been submitted about, you know, offer XYZ to all employees and offer da-da-da-da-da-da. And what we were talking about was that that might not be realistic. And so instead, we needed to engage in more of an actual strategic planning process for what what we need. And instead of town council throwing solutions out there, we needed to ask the question and explore that, explore those options. So this is not, this goal area is not saying, do all of these things. It's saying, when you look at the strategic options, consider these things in what the, what the.
I guess what I was asking is, do we think we're not unattractive? You know, is the reason this is on is we think we're not
It says more attractive, I think. So it's, it's not saying we are unattractive. There's always room for growth.
All right, getting funny. Uh, Counselor Hanke?
So I'm gonna try and offer a little bit more clarification. I had proposed something, and when we get down there, I'm gonna propose that ended up in here that doesn't even, that is completely opposite what I was going for in here. So that could be why it seems kind of strange. The end clause about access to continuing education, supervision, leadership training was something I had tried to put in, and I will again propose when we get down there, that ended up in here that I wanted listed differently.
Do you wanna propose an alternative here, a splitting? Is that what you're going after?
Well, I can't really call it splitting, because I would delete half of it. Which is why I'm proposing something new, because I would, I would end up deleting this one.
All right. Kathy? Yeah, so at this point, we're gonna move on from this. We may have to come back to it because of Counselor Hanke's statement. Incorporate anti-racism and anti-discrimination training into onboarding processes. Andy?
I was wondering why it's, that's here when we've just above and therefore haven't yet discussed a fairly substantial section that talks about, um, social justice issues.
Okay.
I can answer that.
Please, Anna?
So we put this here because it's specific to the administration of the town. It doesn't extend beyond the town staff, whereas the other options above do. This specific action item came out of conversation with the town manager, where we talked about what's reasonable to accomplish in a year and how to maybe be a bit more targeted in our approach, which is also why that top box is the way it is. The town manager talked with GOL about picking a specific part of the employee lifecycle, so thinking about how folks work through their careers in town government, or in any job, and focusing on onboarding as a ideal place to center our efforts for the coming year.
May I, I point out that actually, it's the, in the, into onboarding processes that's really new here, because there's been a lot of effort in training on some of these areas. Okay. Are there any other questions on that? Okay, next one. Undertake a review of salary and supervisory responsibilities to ensure there is no gender bias in salary promotions, salary promotions and job responsibilities. Clarifying questions? Kathy?
This, this, I think this says, we think there is a gender problem. So because we're focused on gender here. I just, is that the, we think there's a gender.
Anna?
It's not stating anything about our opinion. The goal is to ensure that there is not. To answer your, the clarification.
Well, gender, age, ethnicity. So I'm just, by putting the word gender in, you know, it might be an older employee is passed over in favor of a younger employee, even though an outspoken employee, you know, so I'm just.
This was sent.
So I, do we think there is a issue here?
I don't think that's a clarifying question. I think that that's a question that we should talk about at the, at the retreat.
But the clarifying is the wording that it's on this.
So the, the question, can I just try? The question is, and with this in parentheses behind it, is, should it just exclude the word gender and therefore it be any?
That's not a clarifying question. Sorry. The clarifying question is, this is what this was intended to say.
Lynn, since I proposed this, may I try and clarify?
Yes.
Thanks. Yes, gender is in there for a reason, because during the town manager reviews, there were some staff evaluations that had some concerns.
Okay.
That's all I was looking for.
That's, thank you. Okay, Paul?
Yeah, so I think, as I look through these, I look at which ones are gonna require funding. And so some of these will require appropriation from the town council. And, and I, I start to prioritize these in terms of which ones do I need to present to the council for, this is obviously an outside consultant who would have to come in and do something. So I think the only caveat I would put for some of these is that it's subject to funding approval by the town council. And that I will present these, you know, in terms of that during the, during the budget process.
Okay. Do we want to add that now?
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. They're, basically, it's all subject.
They'd all be the same, yeah.
We had similar discussions about other words. Kathy, you have your hand up?
I just, when we come back and we actually talk about what we want on the list, can we put an indicator, this costs money, this costs money, that costs money, you know, which, I'm not saying this one, but.
We are asking the town manager to do that in preparation for the, our retreat.
That's great.
Yes, okay. Counselor Hanke?
Kathy just covered what I was gonna ask the manager to bring to the meeting next week.
Hand up, and I assume we're done for the moment. Engage a consultant to review the organizational structure and distribution of responsibilities of the top management of the town. Clarifying questions? Yes, it would require resources. Okay, are there any other clarifying questions before we ask for any new items for this? Okay, let's move to new items. Counselor Hanke?
It'll look very similar. Offer access to continuing education, supervision, and leadership training to all town staff.
Educ-, continuing education?
Offer access to continuing education, leader, supervision, and leadership training. I guess it could be continuing education and supervision and leadership training to all town staff, although supervision and leadership training are kind of two different things. Yes, so.
It should be supervision comma and leadership training to all town staff. Actually, it should be continuing education, comma, and supervision and leadership training. Uh, we'll work on it. It is separate. They are definitely separate items. Are there any other additions in this one? Pam?
I would actually add the word, um, responsiveness. So supervision, responsiveness, and leadership training.
Could you please clarify the word responsiveness?
Yeah, what is responsiveness training?
We've had several discussions just tonight about not hearing back from people and how much communication is, you know. Anyway, it's, it's related to, do we reply to people and provide information?
Are there any other questions about that? Kathy?
I had another, a different addition.
You have another addition? Pat, did you have a question about this?
Your mic, please? Microphone?
Okay. It feels, well, this is, responsiveness, it feels like a different issue. Are you gonna have a training in responsiveness? Or, I mean, I, I'm just trying to, because this is about education and benefits to employees, benefits to staff. So I'm a little confused. So I'd like you to clarify how it fits.
Is it possible, Pam, to state another goal about responsiveness? So that it.
Another action?
Another action item, I'm sorry, yes.
Let me think about it.
Okay. Meantime, Kathy, you have your hand up?
Yeah, as I said, if you, in this section of administration and leadership, the first is administer the operations of finances. So I wanted to have something that mentioned the word finances.
Please.
And my simple wording, which I'm sure others, uh, might wanna expand, is manage the budget, multi-year capital plan, and multi-year capital plan with timely quarterly financial reports. Just, we need to know, not several months after a year closes how we were, but really, as we go along. So I just added the quarterly reports.
Anna, did you wanna?
Yeah, my clarifying question, Kathy, is, you just said you added the part about quarterly reports. Is that not something that currently is happening? And the reason, and, and again, great if so. The reason why is we had the discussion at, at GOL as to kind of what, earlier I said, just because we want something to continue, doesn't mean it shouldn't be on here. But there were elements that were so foundational to the, the town manager's job, like propose a balanced budget, that we did not put them in here. So we, we were threading that line carefully, and it being in the objective, the town manager still should be working towards that objective. He just needs to achieve the action items out of, as well. So my clarifying question is, are those quarterly reports new? And just to give you context as to why there wasn't like a specific other item. Kathy?
I'll just put the emphasis on the word timely. So for whatever reason, we're not getting them as often as we used to get them. And I had a quick conversation with Mandy, I had a quick conversation with Melissa about the data systems that our staff are working with that make it hard to do it. But there's no reason we we had third quarter a few years ago at the point we were looking at the budget. Not, we never got a third quarter last year. You know, so I'm just saying.
No, that, that clarifies, that's.
My emphasis is on timely quarterly.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that works. Thank you. Are there any other additions here? Pam, you were going to think about yours. Do you wanna wait? Okay, great. We're going on to the next one. Frekka, I'm sorry, Counselor Ette, you had something on the one we just were on?
Yes, if we are, um, if this is going to be a change with the wording that I think Counselor Run, Rooney puts, that should be removed. I can't.
Could we go back? Made into a separate area? Yes. For the sake of not losing it, response, let's just put something about responsiveness, training in appropriate and timely responsiveness. How's that? Okay, just leave it as responsiveness. Great, thank you. Any other questions on this one? Okay. Housing and economic vitality. Complete implementation of the residential renter bylaw. Any questions? Second, continue, I'm sorry?
I actually do have one.
Okay.
I believe the bylaw itself has a five-year total implementation, so.
So it should say continuing implementation?
Continue?
Continue. Thank you, very good catch. Anna?
Are there specific measures within that five-year implementation? I'm sorry, I'm not as familiar as I, as I suspect you are. Are there specific metrics that we can cite, or is continue adequate?
There may be, but I'd have to look at the bylaws.
I can, I can look too, I can look too. I wasn't sure if you, like, if you knew what specific ones were that we could put them in.
I feel like it was something like a third or half, or there were some things in there, but you. It's inspected, yeah. Okay, I'll take. But you have to look at the bylaws.
I'll take the homework assignment.
That's good enough. Any other comments on this one? Counselor Hanke, you have your hand up? Okay. Anna, hand up?
My question was answered, I'm just typing.
Okay, continue to work toward the establishment of a year-round shelter, including presentation of a funding plan. Pam?
I just wasn't sure if this belonged in the, the financial section, the capital section, rather than under economic vitality.
It's one of those where you have to choose where. But yes, Counselor Hanke?
Presentation of the funding plan to whom?
To the town council, is whenever, we, we didn't wanna keep repeating that. Okay. Any other questions on that, besides whether it's here or there? At this point, it's somewhere. That's what's important, and it's not twice, which we kept running into in last year's goals. Okay. Work with Amherst, UMS Amherst, Amherst College, and Hampshire College to identify housing opportunities. Counselor Rooney, you have your hand up? Pam? No. Bob Hegner?
It's not clear what's meant by housing opportunities. I mean, is this opportunities in town? In, at their colleges? I mean, what, what do we mean by this?
Kathy, or?
The same question, do we mean?
Okay.
That, on their, do they have pieces of land that they're willing to build? that they're willing to build houses on? I mean, you know, so, I mean, Hampshire clearly has a lot of land that there could be houses on the land, but is that what we mean?
I didn't submit this, but I believe that is what's been.
I don't have any clarification for you, I'm sorry. I don't know.
I, does any, yeah.
I think the dorms were all full, is what I was going to say. That is not that we could just all move into them, but...
On the other hand, we've just seen an RFP released by UMass that gets at some of this very thing, and there have been discussions by Hampshire, Amherst College about the same thing.
Right, so that's, is the idea that they would expand housing on their land? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, I think what we need to do is say, work with UMass Amherst, Amherst College, and Hampshire College to identify housing opportunities using their land? George, question, comment?
I think it's fine the way it reads. I think the, housing is a key issue in this town, and these three entities have a fair amount of land and are also talking about, at least UMass and Amherst College are talking about housing. And so we're basically encouraging the town manager to continue those conversations, particularly around housing.
Using their own land?
Well, you know, maybe their money, I don't know. I think it's probably going to be their land, but I'm, you know, at this point, we're trying to see what's possible with these bodies in terms of generating housing for perhaps their employees would be one place.
Okay, thanks.
So I think housing opportunities is fine as it stands.
Counselor Hanke?
I guess I was, also had all the same confusion about where on the housing opportunities. Are we referring to just university and college land? Or are we referring to town land? Or, I think it's a bit vague. But I also had a request to add economic development and before housing opportunities. This is housing and economic vitality, and not a single one of these deals with economic vitality, and we need economic vitality.
Got it. Good, good catch. Pam Rooney?
Thank you. I was going to, back to the work with the Amherst College, blah, 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 to identify housing creation opportunities. That leaves the door open a little bit for whether it's created on their land, created on town land, doesn't really matter, created on private land. But I think maybe the word creation would help.
Any problems? Moving on. "Propose a process for creating, implementing, a first-time homebuyer's assistance program." Kathy?
My question is, what's intended here? CPAC has funded first-time home, they put grants in, and one of the issues has been buying existing houses. They can't find them that are affordable. So what do we think the town manager can do? We don't have the money to, so what?
Okay, that's starting to...
I had no idea what the idea here was, because we have Valley CDC with a terrific new piece, that it's all with a piece of our money. So I didn't, I didn't know whether we, what else we think the town can do here.
Anna?
So I put this one in, and it was inspired by other communities that have a municipally-run program for things like this. And so I had been exploring what those were, and looking at how they might vary from Valley CDCs, and how they might support communities that we've talked about wanting to get here that might not qualify for other federal or state down payment assistance programs. So it was to try to address sort of that missing middle a little bit. I don't have a perfect plan yet, and I, if the council decides that because there's no perfect plan, this shouldn't be in the goals, I will respect that. Counselor Ryan?
So, but it just, is this, we float a bond, is it financial? So I didn't know, because CPAC definitely has always had this on the list of...
Yes, for working with external organizations. This would be different because it'd be municipally-run.
Pam Rooney? Oh, taking hand down, okay. Anna, your not, your hand is also down, thank you. "Propose changes to the ADU zoning regulations to bring them into compliance with state law." Counselor Hanke?
It should read with state law and EOHLC regulations.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on that one? Next, "Propose revisions to the zoning bylaws that would reduce the cost of developing, permitting, and building two to six units of housing on parcels in Amherst to increase missing middle housing development potential." Pam Rooney?
Thanks. I think we should consider not necessarily including this one, because it's already possible. I attended the panel the other night, and in which somebody said, somebody on the panel said that permitting is no more onerous in Amherst than in any other community.
Point of order, that's beyond our scope of discussion tonight, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
I was trying to explain why I thought it didn't really need to be included here.
But we're not taking things off tonight, okay? Is there anybody that doesn't understand what it is? Pam, that wasn't your question. Kathy?
Is this, is the intent that we would rezone to allow more six-unit housings? Or is it just to focus on the process of permitting? Because it has a very specific two to six, as opposed to 10, or as opposed to... So is the intent, you know, I'm just thinking, parts of town, you can't have six, and other parts of town, you can have six. So are we talking about rezoning? Is the intent rezoning?
Counselor Hanke, since I believe you proposed this.
I did propose this, it's not a surprise to anyone. The intent is to give the planning department leeway in how best to reduce barriers and reduce the cost of either developing them, well, the cost of the three together, developing, permitting, and actually building. So to develop them, to get the permits, to actually build, what do we need to do to reduce the cost to do that in these? Whether that's change the zoning from special permit to site Pam review, or reduce the size of the lot? I could come up with like 12 different things. But I'm not trying to put anything specific, other than the goal is to reduce the cost of actually getting these things to construction and propose zoning amendments to do that. And leave it up to the planning department and the manager on what amendments would best do that. But ultimately, the goal was, all of our prior town manager goals have been very vague about increasing housing affordability, increasing this, and that's not specific. So I put a very specific one in of where should we concentrate? And what should it be on? But not how to go about doing that.
We're, again, we're not debating the merits of this, we're clarifying it. Jennifer?
Yeah, I just find the response is not clarifying it for me. Changing the zoning is not going, I just don't understand how the cost of building materials, what it costs to build is not going to be, anyway, it just, that doesn't, we can discuss it. It's the way it's worded, it doesn't make sense, and the explanation isn't really holding together.
Can I suggest an addition to this? That would say, that would reduce the barriers and cost of developing. Barriers would be zoning, cost would be the actual other items.
Can I just respond? That is such an edited, I think that's an editorial, that zoning, that the permitting process is a barrier. I mean, to what safe house? I mean, you can make that...
When something isn't zoned a proper way, it's, isn't zoned a certain way, then that becomes a barrier. I'm not, I'm not voting yes or no on this. I'm just trying to play...
Yeah, no, I think this is a very, it's hard to, I think we should wait and discuss it, because this is, there's no way that...
Okay, no, that's, I think that's correct.
This is not an objective, you know, right?
Okay.
No, it actually isn't.
No, I think we...
No, I was just going to say, in terms of cost, we're talking about time, the time that it takes for something to go through a process, et cetera. In that housing forum, there was a sense of how impactful time was in term, because it, construction costs can rise, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So I think, I don't know, so probably can say that it's a deep time, isn't that a difficult call?
Anna?
I just, I wanted to clarify what a clarifying question is. A clarifying question is, do you understand what this is saying? Not, do you think that it makes sense? No, no, it's true. It's not, do you think that this is true? It's not, do you think that it makes sense? Is, do you understand what the action item is trying to say?
Thank you. Kathy?
And that's what I originally asked, Anna, is this supposed to be about zoning or not? Is that included in this? And I listened to the most recent discussion about Barry Roberts' new building on Amity and University Drive, which is not going through complicated, it's just going through regular. And they were begging for it to be over at some point, because they have to deal with water runoff and all these, you know, so it's the two to, it's a two to six issue here, is the way it's framed and others, so it appears to be zoning. So we can talk about that when we come back. But I think this is written in a way that's very focused, and we need to understand what it is, and do we agree with it?
Okay, are there any points, further points of clarification needed on this one? Okay. "Propose revisions to the zoning bylaws to increase and support economic and housing development throughout the town. We're supported by the master plan." Any questions? Counselor Hanke?
Feel free to shoot me down if this is a debate. But if this goes in with the phrase, "we're supported by the master plan", does that mean if the master plan says it, the council would support it?
Very good question. I didn't write this, so...
Clarifying question, second. Doesn't, does the council approve, the council approves the master plan, correct? So hypothetically, so we approved the last one, but we would approve, and we'll approve the future ones. So hypothetically, goals that say, "we're supported by the master plan", the council has in approving the master plan, given agreement, is that...
That's the question.
The assumption that the council tends to make?
That's the assumption.
Because otherwise...
So I ask because there have been prior proposals and zoning changes that come directly out of the master plan and implementation parts of the master plan that, when proposed, the council shuts down.
Okay, I can see how this is going to go past clarifying, but my, that was my clarifying question. Thank you.
Kathy?
I think this one is one we're going to have a debate over, and I think it's written way too broadly. You know, one of the, what is it?
Just leave it for the debate.
And let me just make one more comment about this. Early on, when Chris Bresztraw was there, they wanted to do some revisions of weird language in zoning in our things, where one place...
Point of order, Kathy, do you have a clarifying question? I'm sorry, we're going to stay here for, we're debating at the retreat. Do you have a clarifying question?
I, yes. This seems to be across the entire town. It's not focused, is that the intent?
But what's, what's your question? Sorry, I didn't hear a question.
This looks very broad, like, look at all zoning, all across, is that the intent?
It seems like the answer is yes.
Okay. Any further questions on that one? Pam Rooney?
I would actually rather see this focus on economic development.
Point of order, do you have a clarifying question?
Could this not be clearer if it were focused only on economic development?
I don't know if that's clarifying, you're not saying you don't understand the question. So let's focus, guys.
Are you proposing a new wording?
Perhaps another, another section to focus actually on, to review zoning as it affects businesses that are, that are possible in different districts in town. That was something we had on the goals like three years ago. I'll, I'll work on it.
And it's, it'll be zoning bylaws. Okay, that's a new one. Is there any question on its meaning?
I, sorry. Does this, Pam, are you intending that every zoning bylaw is reviewed with a positive effect, negative effect, negative effect, or positive, neutral, negative effect? Are you, is that what you're envisioning with this?
No. There, there was some discussion a couple of years ago that some of the use, the uses allowed in village business, business village centers, residential village centers, that kind of thing, were perhaps restrictive on what types of businesses could occur there. So it was something that was on the, anyway, it's been on the list before. We have really nothing in here that focuses on economic development.
I just don't really understand what this means, like, because to me, in reading this, this looks as, this, let me say what this reads to me as, and tell me why I'm wrong. This reads to me as, review every zoning bylaw to see its effect on businesses. So, because it literally says, review zoning bylaws as they affect businesses that are possible. So it's saying, every zoning bylaw, how does this impact what businesses are possible in each district? Is that...
But can I suggest a possible edit?
I'm not pushing back, I'm just genuinely trying to understand what the end goal is.
Pam?
You probably wouldn't, you probably wouldn't have to look at all of them.
So could we say, "propose revisions to zoning bylaws to increase and support economic development"? Applicable, right.
But who decides what, which ones are...
And support economic development throughout the town, period.
But Pam's was focused on businesses. I mean, if you look at some kinds of businesses, you can and can't do in different areas of town.
That's businesses. Businesses are economic development.
Housing is economic development.
Yeah, it's true. No, we don't. It's postponed. All right. All right, is there any further clarification on this? Counselor Hanke? Pam Rooney? Begin work on revising the master plan, questions? Pam, you have your hand up, I don't, Bob Hegner?
Yeah. Begin work on revising the master plan to do what? To make what changes to it?
Can I just, I think I probably submitted this, you did? Okay. I would have submitted it if you hadn't, go ahead.
I actually have a different wording. So it's not revising the master plan, it's work on adopting a new master plan within the time required by the charter. The charter requires an adoption of a new master plan every 20 years. We are within five years of that, if not four at this point. And the last master plan process took, I think, five years. So, so the new wording I have is, begin work on adopting a new master plan within the time required by the charter.
Okay. Are there questions about that? Bob?
Yeah. I think, I think it needs to be more specific, because beginning work means, it can mean anything. So, you know, we should have a specific outcome here.
Mandy?
I mean, it doesn't have to be...
We can think about it, I think the first thing last time that was done was forming a master plan...
Committee.
Some, I don't know what it was fully called, it was like master plan, planning committee or something, but I don't know whether that's the same process they want this time, which is why I left it vague, because someone has to decide what that process will be. Is it forming a new committee, or is it being done directly through just the planning board, or X, Y, Z? But we could talk more at the retreat about that.
More specific to be, you know, start a committee to do X, Y, Z. More specific to be, you know, plan, start a committee to do X, Y, Z.
Maybe that's, okay, I, I'm not going to say anything because that's getting to the debate. Kathy?
Does this have, is there a reason this has to be done in 2025?
I think what Counselor Hanke and I both would say is the last time it took five years to develop one.
I'm just, I'm really aware of the staff we have working in our town.
That's getting.
And the, the menu of to-do lists we've just doing. So I'm just saying, does it, is, is necessary for 2025? So maybe that's a retreat question.
That's a retreat question. Okay, are there any more additions to this? Okay?
Yep.
We are going to. Counselor Rooney has a hand up. Community health.
Hold on, hold on, excuse me. I, I did have one, I just couldn't get my hand up in time.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Pam.
Okay, it is a new one, and it's, it's specifically to pursue E O E D mass downtown initiatives and associated funding for sidewalk work and amenities. Explanation, there, we've been, we've been advocates for staff to pursue funding and, you know, bring in, bring in great grants to help like the, the town common, for instance. So there are particular initiatives that are available through E O E D, and I just wanted to raise those up.
I, my only, I actually have a debate, but I don't want to get into that. But does this in fact belong down where we discuss roads and sidewalks? We can, we can deal with that later. Thank you. George, you had your hand, no? Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, community health and community safety, the first one, conduct an assessment of the, of the CREST program and report back to the council by the end of June 2025. Clarifying questions? I think it's up to the town manager to tell us whether that's reasonable, but that's for the retreat. Complete the review of public safety protocols consistent with the council's November 14, 2022 votes. Questions? Work with the council to identify and propose revisions to policies, bylaws and regulations to dismantle discrimination through consultation with marginalized communities. Questions? Counselor Hanke?
What does work with the council mean here versus?
Thank you.
Like, is it going to be in a committee where we should just be getting help from the staff to be doing it? Or are we expecting the staff to be doing the work? Like, I guess, I'm not sure what, what the.
Thanks. Anna?
I believe that the intention here was to ensure that counselors remain feeling empowered to continue to suggest bylaw revisions, as is our, part of our responsibility as well. So I, I think that we put, if I'm recalling, and I open this to all GOL folks to back me up or completely tell me I'm wrong here, because it happens. Basically, this is saying it's not just on the, on the town manager to do this, that the council should be doing this too, and that counselors may be reaching out to work with their town manager on this particular element.
Counselor Hanke?
Okay, next question, the through consultation with marginalized communities, if the counselors are able to propose stuff, how would, what's, what's the intention of that through consultation with marginalized communities in terms of showing you've consulted or not? Or is it going to be like a formal, is it intended to be like formal outreach or, and who and?
I don't know if through is the right word there, but I think that the idea is that that would be something that the council committees would talk about with regards to outreach and, and the like. If, if it's coming from a counselor, there may be other initiatives that the town manager pursues to conduct that outreach. I don't know. Basically, sorry, basically, this is in here just to say that consultation should be part of the process, is my understanding.
I, I actually have a proposed revision or alternative here. And it would be to identify and, just drop the words with the council, work with the council, just say, identify and propose revisions to policies, bylaws and regulations. It's, it's an alternative. Okay, identify and propose revisions to policies, bylaws and regulations. And I, I would take out, just add, and at discrimination. Are there any clarifying questions on this one? Moving on, create and appoint an advisory council for LGBTQ plus youth and BIPOC youth, similar in structure to the Northampton Youth Advisory Council. Kathy?
I, I looked at the Northampton, I think it's actually called a commission. When you say similar, do you mean similar? Because one of the things it was, training people on legislative action and how to draft legislation, there's a lot around politics, you know, on getting involved in politics. So I'm going to ask, when we have a retreat, why we want to do this? What's the rationale? But right now, I'm trying to understand how, what the words similar means, because I went and looked at exactly what they do, and I didn't know what this, the purpose of this was.
Counselor Hanke?
My goal here was, and, and I actually have a rewording because I had written it, I believe, LGBTQ plus, comma, youth, comma, and BIPOC residents. Not.
BIPOC residents, okay.
Residents, not youth, not limited to just BIPOC youth. My goal in proposing this one was to actually remove the consultation with marginalized communities from, and consultation with youth. There were a couple of different action items that included things like consulting with youth or consulting with marginalized communities or consulting with X, Y, Z throughout a prior document. Some of them remained in here. And I was looking to formalize that consultation by creating sort of these committees or a committee or multiple committees that would, that the manager or the staff could go to when dealing with some of this. And that could advise staff and council in a more formalized manner than just this, you know, through consultation with marginalized communities. Well, as I asked in the previous one, what does that mean? This was an, an attempt to sort of formalize what that means within these action items.
Okay, Kathy, you have your hand up? Pat?
When I initially read this, I thought it was about lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender plus youth and BIPOC youth, similar in structure. So with the, I, I just would like a clarification, would there be an advisory council for LGBT people, youth, or BIPOC youth and BIPOC people? You know, when I'm saying people, I'm meeting, I'm tired, older people. So I'm, I'm just confused about what's, I think, yeah, so I'm, I'd like a clarification, is this one advisory council with all these members or is it a series of?
I think I had, you know, it expanded as I, as I went through versions, but I think I had envisioned different advisory councils. So I guess it could be councils, so appoint advisory councils instead of an advisory council. And I know it will need a lot of debate because that's a lot of extra committees, but.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, Pat? Have you gotten, did you get your question clarified? By adding the word residents, having the word similar to the Northampton Youth Advisory Council, the word youth gets diluted here. So, but what Counselor Hanke is saying, she is proposing at least three different groups. Okay, and you've already raised the question of what will this cost in both time and money? Okay? Identify, promote and coordinate programming for youth empowerment to determine levels, level of need for a youth empowerment center. Pam Rooney?
It wasn't clear to me if the intent was to financially support the youth programming and the, and so I actually would suggest some word changes to be identify, comma, financially support and coordinate programming for youth empowerment while determining opportunities for a youth empowerment center.
I'm going to propose an alternative there. Anna, did you, okay, please, Athena, put this in as an alternative because it is different? And Pam, would you please word it again?
Sure.
I mean, repeat it again.
Identify, financially support and coordinate.
So it's identify, comma, financially support.
Identify, financially support, comma, and coordinate programming for youth empowerment while determining opportunities for a youth empowerment center. My rationale is that we don't have a physical structure. I would like to see the town financially support some of the ongoing work that does great things.
Okay, are there any questions or comments? Anna?
My clarifying question is, are those not two different goals? Or, sorry, two different action items? Because I think the, the first was the conditional, right, to determine the level of need. The second is while also determining level, or I think it's, is it opportunities for youth empowerment center or need for a youth empowerment center? Pam?
It wasn't clear that the first one to determine, so do you run programs so that you can determine, you know, how big the youth empowerment center needs to be?
Okay, so I'm understanding, I think, a little better what you're saying. So what the conversation in GOL talked about was saying, when the town manager did his self-evaluation last year, he talked about a lot of youth programming opportunities that were happening, both sponsored by the town and some external ones that the town helped to support. And he talked, and I think many of us reflected that we had no idea a lot of those were happening. And so we included the, the identify, promote and coordinate, thinking, all right, let's, let's really put together what we've got in order to determine where the need is for, for a youth empowerment center. So it isn't just about promoting them, it's, it's promoting, identifying and coordinating to see kind of what's being met already and where the need is in addition to that, if that makes sense.
Yeah, but again, I don't think it's going to necessarily result in a physical structure. So I think we can talk about it again, but I think.
Okay, any other questions on this one? Provide training regarding racial equity, rights and other options to the town council, employees and members of the public. It is a carryover. Are there any questions, comments? Anna? You have your hand up. Okay, propose a plan for the creation of a resident oversight board consistent with council's November 14, 2022 vote. Any questions on that? Yes, Jennifer?
Is the goal to, a step to create the resident oversight board or to propose a plan?
Well, right now, there's a group working on developing a plan. Paul, did you want to speak to this?
Just, that's true. There is a group working on it, which is, they're coming, they will have a proposal to the council at some point, I'm not sure exactly the timeframe though.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, I mean, since this is, we, we, this, we asked that a plan be proposed, I think in 2022, I mean, I would hope the board could be established.
So your alternative to this would be create a resident oversight board?
Establish a resident oversight board.
And then put in that, yes.
Yeah.
That last. Anna, you have your hand up, and then I'm going to Alicia.
You can go to Alicia first, she hasn't spoken.
Alicia?
I'm sorry, I just couldn't hear Jennifer at all because she wasn't pressing her mic when she was talking, and so this might be a moot point, but I was thinking that that could be two separate things. Like, we need the plan, we don't have a plan yet. But I think along the lines of what Jennifer was saying in terms of timing is that it's been quite a while. And so depending on how soon they can get that plan to us, I think we should move directly into the creation of once we have the plan.
So the alternative that she's proposed is to create a plan for and establish a resident oversight board consistent with the council's November 14, 2022 vote. Does that address what you were suggesting?
I think that that could be fine. I've kind of been refraining from saying too much in this conversation because my understanding is that this is just about clarity. And I totally understand exactly what that is saying. I want to add to it, but I thought that that would happen in a separate meeting. So that's also a little bit of my confusion here.
Thank you. I, you're, thank you for that. Anna?
The clarity I can offer here is that this was, this level of specificity was drawn from thinking about what's reasonable to accomplish in the year and what steps, like, what are the specific steps in the process? Not pitching any changes, just adding the clarity from GOL.
Okay, moving on, develop a plan for addressing critical space and program needs at the senior center, including an ADA accessible transportation program that runs five days a week. Counselor Hanke?
Um, aren't they two separate things?
It's very interesting, they were at one point. Let's, let's put an alternative in here. One is, develop a plan for addressing the critical space, space and program needs at the senior center? Just, yeah, split into two goals. Does that address your issue? Counselor Hanke, thank you.
Yes.
Pam?
Yeah, I had a similar thing I was going to say, and increase accessible transportation offerings, instead of being very specific about the ADA accessible transportation that runs five days a week. I'm, I'm just saying, if we had the wording, increase accessible transportation offerings, it doesn't, it doesn't, I mean, it could be Saturdays. It could, you know.
Okay, Bob Hagner?
Really just a wordsmithing issue, but we talk about proposing a plan in some action items and talk about developing a plan in others, so we ought to be consistent.
Okay. Pam or Bob?
I still had one other change.
Okay.
Would love to see, and that is, rather than develop a plan, just cross those three or four words out and just say, address critical space and program needs at the senior center. We know that there's ARPA money, it could be done in this, this year, let's, let's tackle it.
Okay.
Let's not, let's not.
All right, any other? Complete and submit a complete, create, I'm sorry, create and complete, no, create and submit a complete Streets Tier Two prioritization plan and a Tier Three construction application to mass DOT. Pam, you have your hand up?
Actually do.
And comment?
So I'm looking at number, this nine and 10, the last two sections here, they actually feel like they could be combined, maybe they don't need to be. But I, I think my, it wasn't clear why these were being. But I think my, it wasn't clear why these were being suggested, and I think what we're really trying to do is reduce accident rates for cyclists and for pedestrians by doing a couple of things. One, getting the complete streets planned so that we can get money to fix the problems. And then also complete the network, bike network plan, so they may be two things. We could keep them two separate things.
All right. Bob Hegner?
I didn't take it down.
George?
So these are two items, and that's why they're written this way. The plan, the first item, create and submit a complete streets tier two prioritization plan, would then allow us to enter into the application process and access up to $500,000 as Counselor Rooney suggested for addressing some of our critical infrastructure needs, roads and sidewalks. I'm thinking particularly of what will be happening in the next few years on the East Common related to the school. So the reason this is here is to get us in the best possible position in the coming year to access or try to access those funds. The bicycle and pedestrian network plan has been sitting out there for a number of years, and I think it would be prudent and wise for us to try and complete that in the coming year. So they're both specific, and I think they're both doable within a year, and I think the language is clear.
Okay. Kathy?
I just have a question. When I went and looked at what a tier two was and a tier three, tier two includes bicycle and pedestrian network plan, that you need to have one of those to be tier two. So are these redundant? Or are we saying, maybe we don't do the complete streets and try to go for grant money, instead we just come up with a network plan? So I like these, but it just feels like one is a subset when we say tier two. When I read what tier two is, it includes the second one. So we don't need to do it unless we're the general public.
That's what's in there.
You want people to know that what's in tier two. So you could, since it's otherwise Greek to anyone who's read this, like, you have to go Google it to find out what these are, but you could say complete street two prioritization, and you could put per n.
Okay.
Bike and pedestrian. So it's just, it's separated out one element of what a tier two is.
I hear you, and the call to do the bicycle and pedestrian network plan has been a specific call from many, from a lot of residents, and I think because it is part of that one, jumbling it together, again, doesn't reduce the amount of work. So clarifying it out as a separate action item allows us to have that checkbox to identify that it is a priority and to not just do it for the purpose of the tier two prioritization, but to also do it for all of the other good things that a pedestrian network plan includes. So that's why we put it in here separately, primarily to indicate that to the, not primarily, but because of what it identifies to the public as well as the calls to continue this, and because lumping it up doesn't actually reduce the amount of work that needs to happen.
Okay. I understand that this may be for the optics, but at the end of a 12-month period, I'm going to be either checking a box yes or no for both of these if number two doesn't happen. You know, I mean, we won't have a.
Yes, but hypothetically, one could happen and the other couldn't.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Any further question on this? Are there any additions to this goal? George, I know you don't want your hand up at this point. Bob? Do you have, do you have, George, did you have your hand up to add anything? No? Okay, Bob?
Yeah, I don't think we cover health very well in this, in this list.
Okay.
And I would suggest we add something along the lines of developing a plan to reduce or eliminate food insecurity and develop a plan to increase access to medical care and immunizations, again, in Amherst.
Okay, those are two different ones?
Two separate ones.
Develop a plan to, please repeat that, to increase access?
Increase access to medical care and immunizations.
Immunizations. Okay. Those are, any clarifying on what do those mean? Okay. Pam Rooney?
I'd like to add one as well, and that, so it's a new, a new one? I'm just waiting for the.
It's a new one.
I'm just waiting for the box to appear.
Hang in there, Athena, we're coming close.
Reduce accident rates of cyclists by enforcing bike visibility laws, which requires assistance from the police department and education. So, there's some dollars in there.
Counselor Hanke?
Two questions. For the one that was just added, well, it's not really a question, it's a request for information from the manager for the next meeting. Can you get us the actual accident rates for cyclists in our town? How many there have been and what that rate might be given our population or however you define a rate, right? And for reduce or eliminate food insecurity, I guess I'm not, the eliminate is, I guess, where I've got some questions about, are you, like, is this, is this plan meant for, like, you know, Anna had said on one for the, you had a municipally-run housing, first time home, your down payment and assistance programs was intended to be municipally-run. Are you looking with this proposal, a municipally-run plan for eliminating food insecurity? Like, could you just expand on what this plan, like, your thoughts on what this plan might include to get all the way to eliminating it in a town?
Well, if we can't, I mean, reducing, if you want to get rid of eliminating, that's fine. The idea is to make sure that people have access to food. I don't know the details of why individuals don't have access to food, but I do know food insecurity is a problem in town, and I think that, you know, we could, there are a number of ways that you can increase access to food. One would be to bring food to people, another would be to have vendors go to different parts of the town and, you know, another thing would be to create, you know, transportation to and from stores. Anyway, I'm not sure precisely what the plan would look like, but there are ways in which I think we can do more to reduce food insecurity.
Is it insecurity or is it food deserts? Or access to, I guess that's what I'm not quite understanding, given especially what you just described.
Well, food insecurity.
Getting you closer to food.
Covers access to as well as poverty that prevents people from purchasing food. I'm fine taking out or eliminate.
All right. We're taking out or eliminate. Anna, did you have a comment?
I had a clarifying question.
Yes.
The addition of reduce accident rates of cyclists by enforcing bike visibility laws and education, is that through APD? So increasing APD enforcement on bike visibility laws? Yes? Okay.
Okay. Pat?
I just wanted to add to what Bob was saying about reducing food insecurity. There are issues of transportation, there's issues from the senior center for transportation, yep. And there are, there is precedent in establishing mobile markets, so what the town manager and town staff can do is begin to figure out the ways to support those issues.
Okay. So the plan might be how you support it. I thank you, Pat, for making all of those points. Paul?
Just back to the visibility, I want to make sure I understand, this would be to, if a cyclist doesn't have the proper visibility, that the police would pull them over and give them a ticket, is that the intent of this?
Yes.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Can I, I actually have a question on reduce accident rates of cyclists by enforcing bike visibility laws and education? What about helmet laws? There's nothing to do with visibility.
Maybe we should reset, sorry. I was, I just set the website up, so I was just looking at it. Just bicycle laws?
Bicycle laws would include helmets, I think?
It would.
So if you take out the word visibility, it covers helmets?
Yes.
Visibility, comma, helmet.
Bicycle laws include visibility, as per the website.
Why don't we take out the word visibility and behind it, just CEG, such as helmets, visibility, et cetera? Okay. Are there any others that people want to add? Pat, you have your hand up, I don't think, yep, okay. We are going on to the last goal, hang in there, gang. Climate action, update the capital inventory to include criteria and priorities for the transition of municipal buildings, vehicles, and equipment away from the use of fossil fuels. Is there any clarifying question? Next, seek climate leader, climate leader community designation and accompanying funding from Department of Energy Resources, D O E R. Any clarification? Finally, consistent with state law and regulations and as feasible, support the development of climate action-focused bylaws that would reduce greenhouse gases emission and reduce reliance on fossil fuels, including the waste taller bylaw, battery energy storage systems bylaw, and solar bylaw. Counselor Hanke?
I have two separate alternatives. One is to get rid of everything that is at the including, so we'll just get rid of that. Or if the council is not doing this, the way I understand this in clarifying is that I want to add two other potential bylaws.
Please state what those are.
It would be everything. It would be all of that. If the council wants to keep the including, then I have two other bylaws to potentially to add to that list, if we're going to start listing. A ban on two-stroke engines in town and a ban on fossil fuel use in new construction.
Are there any questions or clarifications? Anna?
Mandy, would you clarify on the ban on two-stroke engines? If that would include any exceptions whatsoever? And if I'm reading this correctly, it seems like it would be any and all, and I know you might not know the answer yet, but I worry based on the language. I haven't drafted it yet. What? Thank you.
All right. Are there any additions to this goal? Seeing done. Ah, Bob?
Yeah, for the ban on two-stroke engines, I would, on new, I would add the word new two-stroke engines, because there are people who have two-stroke engines they bought 20 years ago that are still working. I don't have any, but.
Counselor Hanke?
That would be a debate as to when the bylaw is proposed, what it reads.
So, okay. Are there any other questions of clarification on this one? Are there any new proposed ones? We have completed this exercise. And we have now added more goals than any human could ever accomplish.
Before, before you move on?
Yes.
So I know I've got some tasks to bring. What I will ask you as we go through this process is what does success look like? Tell me exactly what I would have to do to accomplish what you're asking for. So I would, whoever's proposed these goals, and I would say that these, this is too many. I mean, I think you should be thinking very hard about which half do you not want to do, or which half do you think are lower priorities? Seriously about it, it's going to be, in 11 months, given the staff demands that we already have on our place, it's going to be very challenging. So I think the value the council brings is not creating the list, it's in creating the priority for us, and that that's a priority is the work that is the hard part for the council. Adding things on is really easy, but if you tell us, I would like our staff to say, these are the three or five, I mean, it's going to be more of things that we really need to accomplish this year. So I think I would ask each of you to say, what is your top one, two, three things that you really want to get done this year? And that's one of the reasons I've reached out to have those one-on-one conversations with you as well, but as a council, I'm hoping you'll come to some consensus on that.
Okay. Kathy?
I just want to double underscore what Paul just said. I am astonished at what we did tonight. I thought we were going to be narrowing. I think the idea of priorities is priorities. If you can't do everything and you've got limited staff, what do we want most? So I think that's what we've got to do. But this, I mean, there's nothing, most of these ideas, many of these ideas, we wouldn't get debate about them. Some of them will get debate about them, but I just think we, I don't know, there's even a Christmas tree. We went, we went over, we went over the cliff, and we're sitting here with budget shortfalls left and right, staffing shortfalls left and right, committees that can't easily be staffed because the staff is already staffing three committees. So I think we really need to go back and do some heavy red mark, just exit, exit, exit.
Yeah. That's the fourth.
I'm astonished, because I came in with my list of deletes. It didn't even occur to me to add anything other than I thought maybe the word finance should be somewhere in it. But, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Hanke?
In terms of process, the retreat is four hours next week, so seven days from now, well, eight days, but practically seven, given it's 10:00 PM. You talked at the beginning of this process that next week we would be asked to prioritize, but also you were trying to figure out some of the categories, like high, median, low, but there was also going to be like a easy or something, and then also maybe a delete. If you could, I'm asking people here that are in charge of this, if you can get us this chart and ask us to do a preliminary one before we even arrive.
That is the goal.
On Tuesday of next week, but we need time to.
No.
I don't, so I don't know what the timing of all of this is, and then have that collated when we get there, because then maybe we can, if we've got some agreement, we can start with something.
The goal is to do the prioritization prior to the retreat. Athena?
So the intent with this part is to collect the ideas, make sure that everyone understands everyone's ideas, and then we wanted to have this conversation first so that we can do just that and analyze that data and present it as a group at the retreat, so we can see everyone's priorities and thoughts on the full list. And then at that point, the conversation is, what's the capacity? What are our resources? What maybe needs pulled off the list? So as soon as I can tomorrow, I will share out what the council had edited at the meeting tonight and give some guidance on how to, give me your feedback in terms of priorities and so on.
Are we going to be told how many at most we can rank in the high? And in terms, because there's also like.
That was an initial discussion.
Separate, like, goal areas too, right? You know, and so it's hard to say, I guess, as I'm approaching this at home, since we're not going to have a lot, is it, do I get 10 highs only? Can I put them all in the same goal area? Or can I only have so many highs per goal area? I think we're going to need some guidance around some of that.
I want to have, I want to give Anna a chance to speak, since she's thought a fair amount about this as well. amount about this as well. Anna?
Unless this has changed since the discussion, what we've talked about is not, because each goal area has a differing number and scale of goals, we're not, we're not limiting priorities to a number per goal area. The goal areas are just kind of our organization processes, we create these. When we go through prioritization, the, the math of it, we don't know yet, we have to look at the total number here, but yes, the thought was, unless I'm mistaken and something shifted, the thought was there would be a set number of high priorities that you divvy out, a set number of lows, and, or mediums, and then lows, and a not on the list at all. So, we can't be in a system where we have all ranked everything high. There's got to be some choices made, like Paul said, this is just too many, so that is the idea, I don't know the number yet, I think that's something that Athena will be.
I would, I would add to that, a short anecdote, because I think it's difficult to put a number on this, and I think the conversation is what's reasonable, rather than a specific number, because any number feels arbitrary. So, I often ask my son, what's a reasonable thing? You love this story. How many Oreo cookies do you want? What's reasonable? And he'll say, three. And I'll go, okay. We were with my niece, and she said 10,000. I was like, you need a lesson on what's reasonable, right? So I would ask the council to do this exercise with high, medium, and low priorities, and then other, such as, you know, I'd like to get this done, but it seems like a low hanging fruit kind of thing, in a reasonable way, so not ranking everything a high priority, not eliminating everything, you know, so let's be reasonable and not strict with the number. Does that feel okay?
I, no, I think, I think we have disagreement among the committee at this point, is the problem. I think that there's some of us that have talked about this with you, myself, and Anna, and George, probably feel like we should say, you get so many highs, you get so many mediums, you get so many lows.
I don't think that will be useful when the, you're having a discussion, because there's no basis for saying, okay, everything that's a low priority, we do this with, everything that's a medium priority, we do this with. There will be a debate on each of the goals, I think the intent with the prioritization is to give the council a picture of where the priorities lie, and how many counselors feel those priorities.
Anna, George?
I appreciate everyone on this council very much, I want to say that, even if we disagree. Athena, your anecdote is excellent, and what you're saying is true if everyone has an understanding of the scope and scale, and of what is reasonable. I think in this example, we might all be your niece, and that's my concern, is that if we go through and we rank everything that we think is reasonable as high, I don't think it's actually going to be reasonable. So that's my rationale between giving a set number, and I, you're absolutely right, set numbers are arbitrary. I don't think that until, unless we do two retreats where we sit with Paul and get a grasp on, on how, what each one takes, I don't think that we have the ability right now, just based on how we engage in this process in the past, have the ability to know what is reasonable.
Can I ask for two other things, or helpful when, when this email comes through? One is, it will be hard to rank some of these when I don't know the costs associated with them, so if those, I know you might not be able to produce them yesterday, but, you know, or tomorrow, right? But it makes it harder to pick high, medium, low, if the cost of it would change my ranking. So I don't know how, give us some guidance on how we should note that in this ranking, and then also some guidance on how we should note a priority when there are six alternatives in the same box.
Okay, I want to give some other people an opportunity to weigh in. Paul? Jennifer?
The other thing I was going to say is, I don't know how accurate, or, I'll give you a, in terms of the financing of all these things, it's, I might do like a $1 sign, it'd be like a restaurant thing, $2 signs, $3 signs.
I think that would be, you know, fine, and just say, high, medium, low, would be fine, too. Jennifer?
Yeah, I agree with Anna, I think we need a number, and I thought, Paul, that was a very good suggestion, I'm going to do it myself, it's like just my five priorities, because if we all go through that exercise ourselves, I think that might be helpful, and just we won't come in and be so invested in everything we think is important.
Okay, I'll give you a number of cookies.
In addition, I think that there was a question that kept coming up in my mind, is whether things that were being proposed at various points duplicated what already exists. For example, it was the creation of a number of different bodies to advocate for, and various groups that were potentially, or in actual life, being discriminated against, but we have a Human Rights Commission. But what is the purpose of the Human Rights Commission? Are we disbanding it? It, it just, there were tremendous number of questions that came up about this, in addition to budget, which I think is, budget is, means staff time as well as money. And I think that we can look at the experience that we've had with existing bylaws that we've tried to pursue, which I will admit readily that I'm involved with, as sponsor of Waste Haller, the other was the lighting policy. You know, we know now that both of those are topics that take a tremendous amount of staff time, and may take additional resources, and may, because we know what other communities have done, be successful and be very productive, but we don't, but the question is, in the end, is whether it is worth the cost, and we can afford the cost. I think there are just a lot of factors that need to be weighed in every one of these, which former counselor, Shalini Ball Millen, had raised as an issue, that we should look before we consider any issue in a series of great, criteria to make those decisions. And I am really worried about what's going to happen at the retreat, when we're trying to do with this with so many different proposals at the same time. And it was hard enough to conceive of doing it the way that Shalini was talking about, which was, a proposal was made, and these are things you should think about before you go further, and here we are, not just doing that with one, but doing it with a whole group of things at the same time. I just can't conceive what this process is going to be like, and the, whether I'm going to be sane at the end of it.
I also want us to be individually clear and honest with ourselves about what we're putting in this document. I have been, as a counselor, working on food insecurity for six years, okay? And Bob is the first couns, other counselor who's ever brought it up as an issue in the council. And as much as I would like to see it be a goal, is that, that's a, this council has never addressed it. So, can it be a goal in this document, or do you, or should it be removed, and you and I sit down and start to think of some actions and proposals that we bring to the council? So, does that make sense?
Thank you, Lynn. I think, I'm thinking about a few things here, and these are just things to consider, I don't necessarily think that there will be an answer to many of these questions, but, sorry, excuse me, I'm wondering, when we're talking about ranking, and we're looking at the categories, I know Anna said that we're using our sort of general categories for, like, just general management purposes, but are there any categories that we, like, together think that we want to have no goals in for the next 11 months? And I think that that's something to consider, especially taking into consideration the fact that Paul is asking us to be reasonable, and to really think about what can be done in the next 11 months. And so, understanding that even if we don't have a goal listed under a specific category, that that doesn't necessarily mean that nothing under that category will be done, but we use this to evaluate our town manager. And so I think what our perception of his progress and successes is really dependent on what we decide we put in this document, and I think it's really important that we all be on the same page in this process, because it will help us to be more efficient in evaluating the town manager, and making really clear expectations for him, which I think has been challenging for us in the past. And so like, my initial thought would be, and to be honest, not really what I think is ideal for myself, but picking one high priority topic in each category, unless, again, we think that there is a category we can agree upon not having a, a goal in for the next 11 months, and ranking them that way, I'm not really sure, but I also, I don't really think cost, for me personally, is something that goes into my ranking considerations, because I think if there was one thing that we all consistently ranked as high priority, and there was a cost to it, but it's one thing, and we're minimizing this document, then maybe it's something that's worth considering seriously, even if there is a cost, or even if there are staff, staffing implications, I think that those are important things to talk about. But I think we will get to the sort of meat of those things in our council retreat, and so for just the purposes of prioritizing the document so that we can get to that discussion, I think it is important for us to have really clear, uniform, sort of rules around how we're going to be ranking these things. And so, I know that kind of wasn't really super helpful, but these are just all of the things that I am thinking about right now, and it would be helpful to have guidance if we want to have one high priority in every category, and then rank them down the line that way, so we can have it for a basis of discussion. But I think if I have five high priorities in one category, I'm not sure that that's going to be helpful for a conversation where another counselor might have no high priorities in that specific category.
Thank you. I think that was very helpful, Alicia. Kathy, you still have your hand up?
Yeah, well, actually, I put it up. I think a number is really important, I looked at 37, and I thought we should cut it down to 25, in terms of the actions. And I like what Alicia just said, but one of the things that happened in the drafting is there was a real effort to break things apart into single actions, where you could have had a three-sentence thing that had three things in it. So, I think we're up over 50 right now, my guess.
Yep.
So, I thought we'd go from 37 down to 25, but I think we need a number, just the way if someone told me I have $100 to spend, I have to live within $100. I think we have to live within a doable set.
Yep.
So, I strongly urge that we don't just say high, medium, and low, but we say, get it down to a number, and Alicia's suggesting one in each of the major things, maybe that doesn't work, but no, not 20 in one.
Anna, do you have some final thoughts on this? And I think at this point, we need to go back to our committee.
I think they're repetitive of what I've already said, so I lowered my hand.
I didn't hear that.
I would have been repeating myself from before, because I felt like I had said it too long ago, so I'm lowering my hand.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for the various pieces of feedback, and the committee, if you will, will meet as soon as it can tomorrow or Wednesday, okay? We will get something to you in advance, we will ask for it back prior to the retreat, and we will compile the, the information, so you have it for the retreat, okay? There are no committee and liaison reports, because no committees have met since the last time. So, and we approved the minutes. Paul, you, you do not have a written report? Yes. Do you have a liaison report? Oh, go ahead, Pam.
There was a, there was a building committee today.
Yes, there was, for two hours and 15 minutes. 15.
15. So, and it was, it was from the consulting parties, explaining what they thought mitigation might be, and I'm going to cough, so that's all I'm going to say.
Okay. All right. Are there any other liaison reports or committee reports? Paul, did you have anything to add?
Just a couple things, so just to appreciate that Pam didn't mention the, the building committees meeting today, which I thought was well-managed, a lot of interest in people, 80 people there, I think, were, in, in total, so it was a really good meeting. Thank to all the counselors who attended the Mass Municipal Association Connect 351 meeting in Boston over the weekend, and Thursday and Friday, that's a big time coming, and we want to recognize that, but, you know, I hope, I hope you'll give feedback to the MMA on, A, the location, the, how the facility worked, what workshops you liked or didn't like, or what was missing, they, they really need that information. The, one of the outcomes from that was the announcement at the Maya Breakfast meeting of our health insurance, the range of health insurance, we don't know our individual rates yet, but earlier we had been working through a 10 to 15% range, they had come in with a 12 to 19-plus range, which is not good news for us. So we will know that information, hopefully, in advance of the BCG meeting, I've really stressed to them that that's an important time for us. They know our, where we've been budgeting, so we'll see what they do, but I think we are, I'm anticipating, we're be at, we were at the high end of the range when they came to us last time, so I don't expect good news on that. And the last thing is just to, I just credit our staff for putting together the, the warming center at the Bang Center, and it became really important, because what happened on Tuesday, when it opened, was that the Craig Stores, place that they, where they have for daytime, and behind the First Baptist Church, the pipes froze, and so they couldn't occupy that, and so they were able to, with their staff, come over to the Bangs Community Center with the Crest staff that were already there, and be able to occupy that space, and they actually extended it to Fridays, even though the weather was starting to warm up, because that facility, the trailer, they call it, behind the First Baptist Church, wasn't available. So, it was, it was great that we, our team had put together, everything was ready to go on Tuesday morning, and just credit to, you know, Crest, APD, AFD, Senior Center, Health Department, everybody in the Bang Center for pulling it together.
Right. Yes, quite an effort. Are there any other questions of the town manager? You have a written report in your account, in your packet from me, I'm sorry, it was not there until today, because, like you, I was at MMA. If you have questions now, please ask, if not, you can ask me later if you want to. Future agenda items? I did, also did not get the calendar started, but I will, and in doing so, will ask each of the committees, when they form, to make sure that we've listed the things that you know are still part of your committee's efforts, okay? Mandy, Joe, you, I mean, Counselor Hanke?
You answered what I was going to ask.
Oh, okay, Counselor comments? I'm sorry?
You answered what I was going to ask.
Oh, okay, thank you. So that, and so now we're, any future agenda items? Any Counselor comments, including observations about MMA? That people feel they need to make? There's no, any other final comments? Okay, there's no executive session, I move to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded, we'll move immediately to a vote. Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Counselor Lord is absent. Pam Rooney?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Jennifer Taub?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Patty Angeles?
Aye.
Anna Devon-Gothier?
Aye.
Counselor Ette?
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke?
Aye.
It's unanimous with one absence. Good evening.